All right, Jill McIntosh, there we are. We are called the -- The chancellor is still working the room. But you know what I'm talking about. I want like, okay.
Hey, Bill, actually, I get questions.
Okay. She is the, she is, she was appointed as in-house counsel. She took over, uh, what's the guy's name? Uh, that was the head of administration. She combined two jobs to in-house counsel to save us money.
And human resources.
Yeah. She is in-house counsel to save us a lot of money on that kind of stuff, on human resource.
Now, what does she know more?
That's what, that's the law she practices. As a law sneaker, that's what her expertise is really in. And then she, you know, and then, uh, she, she runs what, what's that guy's name? The director of the house. Okay. Yeah, I talked to him. Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Hello, everybody. It's a little hello. It's five after six. We're a little late, but that's okay. Welcome, everybody, to the first meeting of the first, of the, first of the year of the Tarrant County College. And, and welcome, Dr. Jordan and Coppola especially, to your first meeting. I haven't told them what we do to them the first time they're here.
I told them already. I'm sorry.
They're gonna sing the, uh, the school song with El Toro's gonna come in with the football team. No, no. Welcome, sincerely welcome to your first meeting. This is quite a group, isn't it? This is quite a team. Welcome to the team because it is really a fun one. I've called the meeting to order, and do we have any, uh, public comments? I gotta say, we don't have any public comments. So, Madam Chancellor, I've got you first on the agenda for presentation of student success and that kind of thing.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and good evening to all of you out there and to those out in the clouds who are, uh, partaking of our board meetings. Welcome to all of our board members. I'm very pleased to present to you tonight, uh, three really, three pieces of really good news. The first of which is very much related to our success initiatives. And we are featuring this evening, the South Campus, and Dr. Peter Jordan gets to introduce the program in his very first board meeting. And before I formally introduce him to the whole world, you'll have to wait for that later. I'll give you time to get that part out of the way, Dr. Jordan. So I'll call on him now to present the presentation on building bridges to student success. Dr. Jordan.
Talk about baptism by fire and initiations. Well, thank you very much, Chancellor Hadley. I'm really pleased to be here, and I'll tell you how happy I am a little later in the meeting. At this point, I'm really thrilled to have members of the South Campus here with me this evening, and you can applause, you can applaud, um, to highlight one of the successful intervention programs that we have been piloting at the South Campus. It's the Summer Bridge Program. Let me introduce some of the individuals who have been the force behind the launch of this intervention project. Dr. Joe Bagley, Vice President for Academic Affairs, if you would stand. Dr. Nicole Bradford, Vice President for Student Development on the campus. Ms. Gladys Emerson, Vice President for Continuing Education. And a number of our faculty and department chairs who have been involved. And so I wanna applaud these individuals for the collaborative effort that they've put forth in terms of introducing this program because we know when a campus works together, students succeed. To make the presentation, I want to introduce Dr. Linda Braddy, who is our Dean of Mathematics and Natural Sciences. She oversees the departments of Biological Sciences, Physical Sciences, and Mathematics. Quite a load she carries. Dr. Braddy has been dean for two and a half years at our campus. She holds a PhD in Mathematics from the University of Oklahoma, and she also holds bachelor's and master's degree in Mathematics as well. I present to you Dr. Linda Braddy.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Chancellor and members of the board, thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you about our bridge program. We're very excited about it. Okay, so, we sort of have all heard a lot about the developmental needs of our students in the district, and we recognized a long time ago that on South Campus, those needs were especially high. In 2007, there was a campus survey of faculty that indicated that their perception of the number-one factor contributing to students' lack of success in college was insufficient academic preparation and social readiness. So, to increase the readiness of our incoming students, work began back in 2007 with a TCC team visit to a community college in Maryland, Anna Rundell, to observe their summer bridge program. So that model was used to create our first summer bridge program on South Campus in 2008. Funding for a two-year pilot, um, project for 2008 and '09 was provided by the chancellor. The planning and implementation have been a joint effort, as Dr. Jordan mentioned, between Continuing Education, Student Development Services, and Academic Affairs, beginning with the very first, um, visit that was made to Maryland. The academic department faculty developed the curriculum. They continue to serve as the instructors, and they serve as mentors to the program completers during the following academic year and beyond. The program is offered as a continuing education course still, and Student Development Services has primary responsibility for recruiting the students to participate. So the program is an intensive accelerated program. It began as a four-week program, 120 hours. It was focused on reading, writing, and college success skills, and the students paid and continue to pay $50 tuition, and that includes textbooks and meals. So it's worth a lot more than that to them. We try to keep the cost low. We had a capacity initially for 20 students. So the key features are the acceleration, the follow-up mentoring program, and the low cost to the students. So, the evolution and the expansion of the program, we made adjustments each year to, in an attempt to improve the, the program outcomes. And in 2010, we had the opportunity to get a grant from the coordinating board through El Paso Community College to allow us to expand it. That acronym stands for Community College Development Educate, uh, Developmental Education Initiative Program. So it's focused on developmental education. So we got $50,000 for 2010 and 2011 reading and writing program. And then we got another, unexpectedly, $50,000 for 2011 additions of a math program, and we could offer Earn While You Learn incentives, which are cash incentives for the students to complete, and then the service learning component, which they really liked. The Service Learning Project took place at the Southwest Retirement and Rehabilitation Center in Fort Worth. The residents were so excited about the students coming. The first day they showed up, the activities director met with our students and explained to them what they needed to do. And she told them the story that when she told the residents of the, of the retirement center that the TCC Summer Bridge students were coming to visit every Friday for, it was five weeks, they were so excited, one lady in particular, because she was finally gonna get to learn how to play, play bridge. And of course, our students were looking at each other going, "Bridge? What's that?" So, two different kinds of bridge here. That was the funniest part to me, that our students were like, "What?" So, as part of the project, each student wrote a paper about a resident, so they had to visit with them and find out stuff about them. And then the students created a video, there was a 10-minute video, and we actually clipped about two minutes out of that. And so it's much longer, but this is their perspective.
TCC Bridge Program, and I just wanted to talk about how, what I experienced with this nursing home. I experienced a lot. I enjoyed it a lot. I've always liked seniors, and talking to Ms. Hardman was really nice. It kinda impacted me a lot because she reminds me of my grandma.
I really enjoyed coming here because it opened up my eyes of how we can bring a better prospect, positivity to the senior citizens. Also, I wanna be a physician, and even if I wouldn't have done this with the program, I'd still would have come by myself because I really wanna get the experience of actually doing something and helping.
First time like I came, like, at first I was kind of sad, but then the first two people that we went to, one of them tried to hug me and she touched my face, and like she told me that I was so beautiful and thank you for coming. And then nobody, nobody else came and visited her, not even his brother, her brother, and, um, like, they are happy to see us every Friday, and...
We appreciate this opportunity because it has changed our life, and I believe you have changed these people.
We love them. And, uh, well, now I'm just like writing a, like a paper about their lives.
And we're really enjoying this. We're learning a lot about the report. We're learning English skills and writing techniques.
Yes, writing techniques, and it's really improving our writing. So, yeah, we're really enjoying this, and, um, we hope to do it again in some other nursing home as well.
So, the team approach continued through that with the math faculty member heading up the Service Learning Project, but she worked with them and had them write a paper, and they were learning skills in the, the reading and writing part of the program. So, they were working together too. The grant funding also provided us with tablet PCs with Dino software. So, tablet PCs, you, you can use them like a laptop, or you can flip the screen around and lay it down and use it like an iPad. You can touch it with your finger, or you can write on it with a stylus. And so the Dino software turns each one of those into an individual smartboard. And so the teacher can see, like, if the students work a math problem, she can see all of those. She can pop one student's problem onto everybody else's screen, and they can talk about it without anybody being, being embarrassed that, "Oh, it was my problem. It was wrong." Or go into the board and working it wrong in front of students. And then the teacher can also put them into virtual groups. So if the three of us are in a group, and I write on my screen, it shows up on both of yours too. You write on yours, and it shows up on mine. So that was a nice tool for the instructors to get to use, and we still use those. The grant funding also provided faculty professional development opportunities. Of course, we did Dino training, that software. And then we focused on best practices with some training for the math faculty with hands-on manipulatives in math, algebra tiles, hands-on equations, that kind of thing. And then workshops done by the National Association for Developmental Education. And then we brought in two special speakers to the South Campus that talked about engaging diverse populations of students. So, the, uh, some math faculty also, we sent them on some site visits to visit some math emporiums because that's a developmental math level type thing. And so they visited Northern Virginia Community College. They visited Virginia Tech University, and that's the original math emporium back in the 90s. They were the one who, the ones who came up with that. And then Louisiana State University. So, um, the 2012 program now that we're doing this summer has evolved into, instead of four weeks, it's five weeks. And now we're focusing on the, the math and the reading and the college skills, and we now have a capacity of 30 students going forward. So, the program outcomes, we've had a total of 44 students who have come through the program since 2008. And I'll talk to you a little bit more later about the recruitment. It has continued to be a challenge. And so, because different kinds of data tracking occurred during the 2010 and '11 program years because of the funding agency, they require, you know, different kinds of accountability, I'm just gonna present, um, outcomes from the 2010 and '11 programs from here out because I have more for that. So, there were 31 students who completed the program in those two years, 2010 and '11. Seventy-one percent of them enrolled in classes at TCC that fall semester, okay? Then, I wanna remind you, if, if you aren't aware, there are seven developmental education courses. There are three math, two reading, and two writing, okay, that a student might have to take when they come to us. So, we're gonna talk about some of the program outcomes in terms of the number of classes a student skipped, which means they came in with an Accuplacer score, and they would have had to take maybe all three developmental math classes. But then, at the end of the five weeks, they retest on Accuplacer, and that score actually places them where they're gonna start in the fall, or in summer too. And so, if they came in needing all three, and now they only need one, they skipped two. So that's what that means, okay? So forty-two percent of these two cohorts skipped at least one developmental class, okay? And that was for $50 for five weeks. In fact, the group actually skipped 27 classes total. And what was really neat about this is that, if you look at the second line that says exactly four, there were 20% of the students who skipped four developmental classes. So that means, that's four classes they won't have to take now because of that five weeks that they spent and the $50. So, in, in the 2011 program, it was possible, possible for them to skip all seven of them because we had reading, writing, and math addressed. That was the only year that we had the math component in there. So, the retention outcomes, the 2010 cohort, 75% of them completed classes that fall. And 40% are still enrolled this semester in the spring. So we're talking about from the fall of 2010. And we have a third of them who have maintained continuous enrollment every semester since they attended the, the Summer Bridge Program. So, these 33% are on track to graduate. I saw Kevin in the parking lot the other day. I said, "How's it going?" He said, "Great." He said, "I'm gonna graduate this semester." Well, guess what his last class is? Math. He went through the year that we didn't have math, right? And they put math off to the end. So, anyway, I looked at all their transcripts, and they've completed a lot of hours, and so they're on track to graduate. So, if you call that a 33% graduation rate compared to our district rate that's 8%, then that's, these are small numbers, but as far as the population, but it's still better. So, the retention outcomes for 2011, we're just talking about since last summer. So, 67% of them completed their classes last fall, completed some classes last fall. And then 60% are still enrolled this semester, and then we've just had those two semesters to follow them. So what lies down the road, looking ahead? It's time for us to look at scaling up. Kay McClennie cautioned us a week ago Friday against being an institution with only a history of projects. She said, "You gotta scale it up." She also reminded us that research tells us that students don't do optional. So, part of the challenge that I mentioned earlier in scaling up is recruitment. So, we believe that district policies should be developed based on the data we have here and national data as well that would eliminate that optional. And so we have data that also shows that students who come in with low Accuplacer scores below a 35, if they take the very first developmental math class, they have a very slim chance of passing it with that low an Accuplacer score. So if we have a floor for that, and we allow them to do something else through a non-credit means or a summer bridge program, then we can eliminate how many classes they have to take and how many times they fail. Do you have any questions?
Linda, I, I have a question while board members are thinking about theirs. About a year and a half ago, I guess, Sue Sanders came, maybe it's two years now, and presented for the board on the SMART classroom. And I was reminding of that when you talked about those tablets. Were you in the SMART classroom? Were you using that technology?
Actually, we did meet in a SMART classroom, but this, we didn't use that because this, instead of having the SMART board on the wall, and if you wanted a student to, to do something, to demonstrate something, they would come up, and they can write on the board and that sort of thing. This allows them to do it at their desk, and it also allows the teacher to take her work and put it on their screen, or take one of the other students and put it on everyone's screen, and so they kinda get that, they can write on it themselves individually, and so it's a more personalized type of, of instruction.
And the grant paid for those?
Those computers and the software.
And the software.
Yes, yes. That was the biggest chunk of the grant, was that.
So, following up on that, um, is that the total number of those units that we have? And have you already requested to have those kind of units available to a larger number of students?
Are you talking about the, the tablets?
Yes.
Yeah, we have 33 of those. We got 30 for the students, and then we had three for the faculty members in case they needed to take it overnight and do some preparation. So, we do have 33, and faculty are using them some now. I think mostly, we still haven't gotten the word out enough that they're available and what, what they'll do. So, we haven't requested any more of those through the district.
So that would be something to consider as well as?
Definitely.
More staff development.
Definitely.
Using those. The next thing I wanted you to just briefly mention was contrast the cost between the $50 program and the cost what a developmental class would have cost those students.
Oh, okay, yeah.
If they enrolled in it.
So, well, a three-hour course would cost them 150, I guess, six now because it went up to $52 a credit hour. And textbooks, you know, plus the time, the whole semester or an eight-week term to do that, and especially the students who were able to skip more than one, it really made it worthwhile. We also, um, provided them with meals, and so that would be something they wouldn't, you know, get during a regular semester, so.
Okay. And another thing that I wanted to talk about was the relationships that might have developed with those students. Some of the research that we heard over the last year told us that, you know, students do better when they've developed relationships early in their college career, whether it's with other students or with faculty. So I think that would be a, an important component to analyze. And secondly, um, how much, if you had your ideal situation, and you could have anything you wanted, how quickly could you ramp the program up? What would be the next level that you would take it to?
That's my question. What does it mean when you mean not optional?
Oh, okay.
I think that's what you're saying.
Well, no. It's two different.
Yeah, that's actually, I think that's two different things. So, so yours first is how quickly could we ramp it up?
And what level could you realistically take it to in what timeframe?
Well, it, it seems to me that, um, the way we did the math in particular, we're, we're also doing that on South Campus. We're using, starting to use an emporium model. Some of the faculty are beginning to do that. We can't do it all right now because we don't have the space, but three of the faculty members are doing that already. So those, those faculty members all know how to do that, and you only need one person to teach each of these groups of students, you know? So, we could do three groups of students with those faculty, and it wouldn't, I don't think it would take much to train the faculty to do that. I mean, I would like to say you could do it in a year, you know, not, maybe not this summer, but the following summer, and have it ready to, um, scale up so that all students would have the opportunity to do that. But I think in order to, to fill the program, and I think this is what you were talking about, what did I mean by not optional? We try to, when we're trying to recruit them, we talk to them about, "You, you really should do this. It will help you skip some of these classes." And, you know, they don't understand the importance of not getting stuck in developmental education, and then you never get out and you never graduate, or whatever. So, um, it's difficult to convince them because they wanna work in the summer, they need to work in the summer, they wanna have fun in the summer, you know, they don't wanna go to school. And so, um, if there were a policy that said, unless you have, for example, unless you have a 35 on the Accuplacer, that would be like a floor score to get into the developmental math sequence that, that we actually teach in the departments. So prior to that, you could have the CE people offering non-course-based remediation of some sort, things like the Summer Bridge Program, and there's other things you could do during the regular semester. And that would be something that the Rider 59 would provide funding for one hour, for, one hour a week for each of those students. hour a week for each of those students. So we could get some funding for that and it wouldn't just be, you know, where they would have to absorb all the cost of it. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Tell them what your recruiting sources are.
Okay. And I guess probably Dr. Bradford would be able to better address this, but we basically have worked with the school counselors. Our counselors at TCC, counselors and advisors have worked with primarily Fort Worth ISD schools in our, in our region of South Campus. And then some of the other schools like Everman and a little bit with Kennedale, I think. And basically, we have, it used to be called College Connection, where we went to the high schools and tested the students in their senior year with Accuplacer. So we have the scores. So we would provide the counselors with the students' names who were actually eligible for the summer bridge program. We've gone and had pizza parties at the schools and invited the kids to come and talk to them about it. And, I mean, we've sort of discussed that the other day, that we've tried everything we can think of to get students recruited into it and we just, we haven't yet filled it. So we, it's like we can see that it works for the students who participate, but we haven't filled it up yet.
So if you address the needs of all of the students at your campus who needed this program, what kind of numbers are we talking about?
Oh, goodness. Yeah, 70, 75% I think, at least, students needed developmental math class. So it would be, all of those students would, well, I guess, I guess only the most needy would be eligible for this if we, if we did it where it's the students who have less than a 35 on Accuplacer. But the way we ran it, it was available to any student who needed a developmental math course because with the math Emporium format, they can come in at any level and just work from there and we just see how far we can get them in the five weeks.
Okay, so let me just say this now. I, you know, I'm all for open access to education. However, with the new requirements that are being put on us and the new criteria for student success, does it not make sense for us to bite the bullet at the beginning of their entrance to the college, to put them on a road that is more prone to success rather than allowing them to serendipitously pursue what they think is going to be fun and that's going to set them up for failure?
Yes, I agree with you on that. I think, I think that's true.
Dr. Morrison, let me respond, let me respond to that. Everybody here on the KELT can tell you that we're all poised and ready to go. We have a retreat this coming Monday and Tuesday.
Great.
And that's an item that's on our agenda. How do we do that? Because the thing that I've said to all of them is that we must serve everybody who comes to us. At the same time, we must find ways to serve them that, where we can benefit them without pulling the college down in the trenches. Because when we move to pay for performance, we're not going to have any options about what we do. We're going to have to address some different ways. And so we've, we're already talking about some strategies and it's very interesting. I know Dr. Brady, the KELT members are sitting here listening at what you're saying because you actually have created an excellent model for us to talk about and study next week to see how we may take it to scale. I just did a little quick math a minute ago when you asked the question about how many students would it be on the campus. Well, if we get 7,000 new students in a semester and you kind of divide that by five and say they are pretty evenly distributed, if you've got 75% of yours needing remediation in math, that's about 1,100 students. And you can understand why it shouldn't be optional for them to do some things. And you hit upon something that was very interesting because I've asked a question, I asked it of the campus president the other day when we were talking, "I'm not sure if we can quote legally do some things." But we're going to look at what we can do and what we can't do. For instance, when you mentioned if a student has a score below a certain point, you know, can we require them to do something different? I don't know if we can or not. That's a question for Angela to tell us later whether or not we can make that work. But we're going to be looking at, you know, what other institutions are doing. But even if we can't prescribe it, as long as we get better at talking students into taking it voluntarily, we should do a lot better than what we're doing because the one big factor is that so many students get lost in developmental education and they get in it. And actually, you were asking Dr. Morrison about the cost and Dr. Brady gave you some numbers. It's actually significantly higher cost than that. Because the other cost is if you're in developmental education and you fail the first semester and you fail the second semester, you no longer have financial aid. So you're at a point where if you come back that third semester, you've got to pay for it. Well, many students can't afford to pay for it. And so they work hard and they get a job and turn them back and try to pay a little bit and then they still don't get out of it and they get deeper in the hole. So it's a very serious problem, not just for our success numbers, but also for those students and their futures. So we're going to be very excited and hopefully we'll leave our retreat with some thoughts at least. And we're going, at the very end of it, we have some go-forward plans and what are they? I don't know what's going to come out of it, but we're excited. So this was a very timely presentation for us, Linda. We appreciate it very much.
You know, I also wanted to say something about, when you were talking about the large numbers, the work that Rick Garcia has been doing with the P-16 Council and working with Fort Worth ISD, they're interested in providing some things for their students in the summer too to get them ready. And that's one of the things that has helped El Paso Community College be so successful with their Achieving the Dream initiatives is that they showed the high schools how unprepared the students were. And so the high schools really got on board and did all of this stuff. So that could help with those large numbers that we have to deal with.
And of course, the other thing that's going to help us a lot as we continue to grow our early college high school on Northwest Campus, and we're looking to open one on Trinity this fall. And the more students we can get involved in early college high school, if we get the right kind of students in there, because early college high school is designed for students who may be at risk of not being successful even in high school. And so we're looking forward to all of those things. It takes a while to ramp it up to scale, that's for certain, but this is an excellent start. And I know some of the other campuses have bridge programs as well. They don't all look exactly the same way, but they all are helpful too in what they do. Thank you.
So please pardon me for making one more comment. And that would be that looking at the board members, which I don't often get a chance to do, I know they're very interested because we want to continue the success that we've enjoyed over the past, but we also want to meet the new challenges of our trusteeship in a fast-forward way. And so I would be so daring as to suggest, and if you look at our history, I believe you'll find it true, that there's never been anything that our chancellor and our dedicated staff has asked for that we haven't, along with the citizens of Tarrant County, been able to provide. So it's not merely about the success of the college, it's really about the success of our community. And we need to, I believe, you know, just do it, just do it. One other thing, I want you to talk a little bit more, you talked a little bit about it, about rewarding them for completion. You know, there's a tendency to think that, well, it's for their benefit, so you shouldn't have to pay or, you know, reward people for what's going to be good for them. But in reality, those rewards, just as the food every day can make a difference between them staying there the whole day or leaving, those other rewards also might make a big difference. And could you talk a little bit more about that? And maybe, I don't know if you've explored how you can make those incentives more meaningful because for that population, I'm certain that it would be welcomed.
Well, the year that we did it, Dr. Thomas was still there. And we had discussed that before because one of the big issues that they always brought up on, you know, the reason why they couldn't come was because they have to work. So that was one reason for us shortening, or lengthening it from four weeks to five weeks so that we could shorten the day and they could be done by 2:30 and they could get to work by, you know, whatever time. So, because originally it went to four. So that was one way to try to avoid that problem within working. So we thought, well, if we could provide them some sort of incentive, you know, financial incentive, then they wouldn't have to worry as much about working. And so Dr. Thomas really felt strongly that they should have to do something for it, not just attend class or whatever. So that was where the service learning component came in, was so that they would actually be doing some sort of, you know, service in the community and then bringing that back to the classroom. So part of their completion incentive had to do with them completing the reading and writing program. They also had a separate one if they completed the math program. And then they had a separate one for each week that they were able to participate in the Service Learning Project. So that was where the sort of, sort of working for it. I mean, we, you know, we know that attending class and doing the work and all that is working, but I think they saw it that way too, that they were actually doing something, you know, to benefit the community. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have an update on Achieving the Dream.
Board members, this is going to be a tag team report. Dr. Joy Gates-Black, as you know, heads up our Student Success Initiatives and she's going to be assisted by our board representative to the Achieving the Dream Project, Ms. Louise Appleman. Dr. Gates-Black?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Mr. Greenhill, members of the board, I am pleased to come before you this evening to give you an update on our work with Achieving the Dream. As you know, Tarrant County College joined Achieving the Dream in June of 2010. And since that time, we've focused on a number of tasks. First, we spent a great deal of time looking at data on the success of our students. Then we worked to identify any institutional barriers that might inhibit the success of students. After that, we began reviewing the best practices of achieving the dream colleges across the country. And finally, we've begun to implement those practices that we believe are appropriate for Tarrant County College. I thought it would be important to remind you everyone of what Achieving the Dream is all about. It's a national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping more community college students, particularly low-income and students of color, to stay in school and earn a certificate or a degree. Now, the values of Achieving the Dream are very much in line with those of community colleges and certainly our Vision 2015 strategic plan. The first value, a student-centered vision and a commitment to the success of all students. This is certainly consistent with our first Vision 2015 strategic planning goal, which focuses on student learning and success through excellence in teaching and learning, support services, flexible instructional delivery systems, student engagement, student, excuse me, learning outcome assessment, and dynamic curricula. The second value, equity and excellence, is consistent with our statewide goals to close achievement gaps among all student groups. And the last value, creating a culture of inquiry, evidence, and accountability, this has perhaps been the most significant change for TCC. Community colleges have historically collected data, but we have not consistently used that data to inform our decision-making. And Tarrant County College is no different. But we are taking this opportunity through Achieving the Dream to begin using data in ways that track the effectiveness of instruction, support services, and other practices and procedures that support the overall success of students. As part of Achieving the Dream, colleges are expected to examine data on student outcomes for the purposes of diagnosing the institution's strengths and identifying areas for improvement, generating the institution's will for change, guiding the college in setting priorities and choosing strategies, and assessing the impact of new policies and procedures. So tonight, I'm going to share with you how Tarrant County College has moved through these steps and how we're using data to inform our decision-making. Now, as we began to look at the internal and external barriers to student success, we reviewed the legislation governing college readiness. And we found that prior to 2003, under the Texas Academic Skills Program, or TASP, students who were assessed and found not to be college-ready were required to enroll in developmental education courses immediately upon entering the college. However, in 2003, the state moved to the Texas Success Initiative, or TSI. Now, this still requires students who are not college-ready to enroll in developmental education courses, but the difference is each institution is now able to determine when the students enroll. Tarrant County College elected to give students the option to determine when they would enroll in these courses. And as we began to look at the data, we realized that this decision may have had a negative impact on the success of students. This is a report looking at the percentage of remedial students who met a TSI obligation within a two-year timeframe. The report is generated annually by the Legislative Budget Board. And the rankings are based on the Big Ten community colleges in the state of Texas. Now, as you can see, in 2009, Tarrant County College ranked ninth in the completion of developmental reading and math and eighth in writing. We did move up slightly in reading in 2010, but our ranking remained the same in both writing and math. Based upon this report, we realized that TCC students who were required to complete developmental education courses were not completing this requirement in a timely manner. Further discussion with faculty and staff at each of the campuses confirmed that our efforts to support students by giving them an option of taking their required developmental whenever they wanted to may have in fact created an unintentional barrier to their success. Now, after reviewing the Legislative Budget Board data, we wanted to know more about the behavior of our students. So we began to review data from several national surveys. We participated in the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, or SESI, in 2009, and we continue to participate in 2010 and most recently, 2011. The SESI is administered each spring to a randomly selected group of students, and you see the areas of focus there on your screen. We also participated in the Survey of Entering Student Engagement, or SENS. This survey focuses on the behaviors of first-time-in-college students, and it's administered during the fifth week of a student's first semester in college. Now, our Achieving the Dream data team and our institutional research staff looked at our survey data and prepared us with a summary on the behavior of Tarrant's students. So what did we learn from our students? Well, the 2010 SESI told us that only 23% of the students participating in the survey were taking advantage of tutoring. Only 43% of the students were using our skill labs like math and writing. And only 49% of our students were meeting with academic advisors. The 2009 SESI report told us that only 13% of our students had, were working, indicated that someone had been assigned to them in case they needed information or assistance. And after one year, only 57% of the 2009 first-time-in-college cohort were still enrolled at the college. The 2011 SESI told us that only 25% of the students taking the survey had completed new student orientation. And 34% of the students in the survey indicated that they worked more than 30 hours a week. Now, that's significant because students who are working that many hours could really benefit from an orientation program. So they know where to go to get the resources to help them to be successful. And they can certainly benefit from meeting with an academic advisor or taking a student success course. The 2011 SESI also showed us which support services students felt were important. And as you can see, the most important service identified by students was academic advising. So based upon all of this data, what have we learned? Well, first of all, many of our students are not taking their developmental education in a timely manner. And by giving them an option, we have in fact perhaps created a potential barrier to their success. We also learned that a significant number of our students are not taking advantage of tutoring. They were not using our skill labs. They were not attending orientation. They were not using academic advising, even though they identified it as the most important service we provide to them. They were working more than 30 hours a week. And after one year, we were retaining about 50% of our first-time-in-college students. Now, you heard Dr. Brady mention Dr. Kay McClinney. She was here last Friday, made a wonderful presentation to our faculty. And she is the Director of the Center for Community College Student Engagement. And that's where both the SESI and the SENS survey originate. And Dr. McClinney was able to share information on TCC's data and on the national data. She confirmed what we found. Students need more structure, fewer options, and clearer pathways. Students don't do optional. If we give them the option of doing something, it may or may not happen. And that leads me to the final point. In community colleges, engagement is not likely to happen by accident. It has to be by design. In other words, we have to be intentional and create those opportunities for engagement, for interaction, and for collaboration. So based upon all of this data, the college elected to begin making some changes. Effective with the fall 2010 semester, we implemented a mandatory remediation requirement for all students. This meant- This meant that any student coming into Tarrant County College who was required to enroll in developmental education courses must begin taking those courses upon entering the college, and they must continue to enroll every semester until they fulfill their developmental education requirement. We also began assigning advisors to first-time-in-college students who require developmental courses, and we required the students to meet with their advisor twice a semester. And then lastly, we implemented a mandatory transition to college success course, but those students were required to take developmental coursework in two areas. In the spring of 2011, we increased our peer tutoring and implemented a tutor training program through our Title III grant. And in the fall of 2011, we expanded the assigned advising to not just those first-time-in-college students who required developmental coursework, but to all first-time-in-college students. We also began assigning advisors to the transition to college success courses as part of their advising load, and we expanded the transition to college success course to include any first-time-in-college student who required developmental coursework in one area. Some of the benefits of these changes. Students will complete their developmental coursework earlier. The students will form early connections with their advisor, and the students will successfully acquire the skills and the self-confidence they need to be successful in college. The changes will also benefit the college in the form of increased student engagement, increased interaction between students and advisors, between students and faculty members, and an increase in persistence, retention, and completion rates. Now, it's been over a year since we began making these changes, and we are just now beginning to see data that supports our decisions. This report is based on our 2011 CSE. This data shows that the number of students self-reporting that they had completed a developmental education course. So as you can see, our percentage went up in each area. Now, the increase can be due to a number of factors, including the requirement for remediation and the assigned advising. We have this data as a result of a new software package called TutorTrack that we were able to purchase as part of our Title III grant. TutorTrack gives us the ability to track the courses students are being tutored in. We track the number of times a student comes in to see their tutor, the name of the tutor, and the overall effectiveness of the tutoring process. TutorTrack has been installed in all of our tutoring centers at each of our campuses, but the Southeast Campus Math Tutoring Center was one of our first ones, so we've been able to have a full semester of their data. This chart shows that students who came into the math tutoring center for tutoring in their math course or for any other course, they were more successful than those students who did not. This chart shows the correlation between the number of times a first-time-in-college student saw their advisor and their overall retention rates from fall 2010 to fall 2011. We retained only 29% of those students who did not see their advisor at all, even though we told them to. However, the retention rate was nearly 42% for those students who saw their advisor one time, and nearly 50% for those students who saw their advisor two times, and you can see a continued increase for those students who saw their advisor up to four times during that semester. We did see a slight decrease at the fifth time, and as we began to look at the data, we found that the number of students in that fifth visit were very small. However, this data does confirm that there is a relationship between academic advising and student success. One of the activities of Achieving the Dream is having monthly campus conversations about Achieving the Dream and student success, and early on, we used those meetings as opportunities to identify institutional barriers. And two areas consistently came up of concern, the concern about late registration and the lack of student attendance in their classes. Now, late registration can be anything from allowing students to register three days before a class starts to allowing them to register the day before, or even allowing them to register once a class has even begun. But no matter what, the campuses were very consistent in their belief that students who register late often enroll in any courses that are still available without giving thought to the course's requirements, their own personal obligations outside of class, or their academic The national data supports these beliefs as well. Wetstein, Wynn, and Hayes at San Joaquin Delta College found that students who procrastinate and wait until the last minute may not be as motivated as students who register early. And Sinclair College believes that students who register late may, in fact, be our most at-risk students, and they're coming in at a time when we are least capable of meeting their needs. Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College found that students who register during preregistration or regular registration have, on average, a 27% higher GPA than students who register late, and students who register late drop nearly 11% more credit hours before their six-week census date than those students who registered earlier. We also looked at the impact of late registration at Tarrant County College. Looking at our fall 2010 data, we found that students who registered late had an average success rate of 55%, compared to a success rate of nearly 61% for students who registered during regular registration. So based upon the national data and our own Tarrant County College data, the decision was made to discontinue late registration for the fall 2011 semester. Now, even with this change, the campuses have continued to see students who come in late to register, and these students are advised to enroll in our Week in College programs that haven't started yet or our second eight-week classes, but they're not turned away. According to our 2010 CSE, nearly 63% of students participating in the survey say that they've skipped class sometimes, often, or even very often. Some of us know about that. The national data, however, does support the need for students to attend their classes regularly. Stuckey found that high levels of attendance are associated with greater student success, and Grand Rapids Community College believes that data because in 2010, they established an attendance requirement. And our own TCC faculty told us that students who do not regularly attend their classes are not able to participate in classroom discussions, and they often don't complete their assignments, which significantly impacts their ability to be successful. So as a result of this data, effective with the summer and fall of 2011, the college instituted an attendance requirement for all students taking developmental education courses, and this spring, that requirement has been extended to all students. Here are some of the benefits of discontinuing late registration and establishing an attendance requirement. First of all, students will be able to finalize their schedules sooner. Students will be in the class at the beginning of the semester. They'll be able to get their syllabi. They'll be able to get their assignments, and they'll have a better understanding of what the college expects of them. Benefits to the college include earlier cancellation of sections that aren't filling and earlier notification to students about those cancellations. Faculty will have accurate rosters and class sizes. Now, you heard Dr. Braddy talk about Dr. McClenni. She was with us last week, and it was a wonderful presentation, and she used a term, disruptive innovations, in her presentation, and she used it as a means of describing the promising and best practices that many community colleges are using to increase the success of their students. I happen to like this term a lot because I believe we have to be willing to disrupt the status quo if we are serious about making lasting, effective change. These are some of the disruptive innovations taking place at Tarrant County College. Now, there are other innovations taking place on our campuses, but these are some of those innovations that we are consistently implementing across all five campuses. We're exploring changes to our math curriculum and our modes of delivery. You heard Dr. Braddy talk about that. We're wanting to find ways to accelerate students through developmental education. We're developing a consistent mandatory new student orientation program. We're implementing an intentional advising and faculty advising model, and we're revamping our Early Academic Alert system. Now, we've already established mandatory professional development, mandatory remediation, a mandatory student success course, and we've discontinued late registration. So with all of these changes, someone probably would ask if Tarrant County College is being too aggressive, or perhaps we're making changes that we don't need to make. I can tell you that neither of these statements are true. The changes that Tarrant County College is making are directly in line with Achieving the Dream leader colleges. And leader colleges, as you might recall, are those achieving the dream colleges that have shown consistent improvements in student success over a three-year period. To date, there are 52 leader colleges across the country, and there are 11 in the state of Texas. In October of last year, 23, the 23 newest leader colleges were announced, and of those 23 colleges, 18 of them have implemented these very same things. And you can see those colleges that implemented changes in their math curriculum, new student orientation, those that implemented intentional or intrusive, as some people call it, advising, an Early Academic Alert system, professional development, and mandatory remediation. And lastly, those that implemented a mandatory success course and discontinued late registration. So what will be the benefits to Tarrant County and its students for being a part of Achieving the Dream? The expected outcomes are also the same key indicators for Achieving the Dream. We believe that as a result of participating in Achieving the Dream and using data to inform our decision-making, we will see an increase in completion of developmental education courses. Our students will move from developmental to college-level courses in a timely manner. We will see an increase enrollment and completion of Gatekeeper courses, and Gatekeeper courses are those courses that keep students sometimes getting in their first level, college-level courses, and they're not able to get past them. We'll also see an increase in the number of earned degrees and certificates. The bottom line is we will see an increase in success for all students because whatever strategies we employ to increase the success of any group of students will ultimately increase the success of all students. We do believe we're headed in the right direction, and the preliminary data supports that. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Wow. Well done.
Yeah. Any questions?
I don't have a question.
You're, you might.
Everybody in here probably had a statistics course, and there's an extreme difference between correlation and causation, and I wonder sometimes, some of these things, we're not talking about correlation and saying, well, if we make them do it, that'll be a cause, but I'm not certain, for example, that's always the case. And so as we progress along this, I hope we're making sure that we're not just necessarily trying to correlate performance. I mean, for example, more motivated students are going to see their tutor. They're going to register in time, you know, and that's, and then we say, well, we'll make everybody do it, and well, we upped the correlation, but we didn't do the causation. So I just kind of hope we keep that in mind as we, as we progress along here.
Well, and I absolutely agree, Mr. Carter. I think as we implement things, we need to make sure that we provide the professional development to implement it well. So, other, other comments?
I'd like to make a comment that, you know, it's about, I think, it's about changing the culture of the community college for the student as well as the faculty and the staff, and saying to the students, these are some things that will up your chances of being successful. This is what you should do. It's available to you. It's expected that you would do it. You're not going to be thought of in a negative way if you go to tutoring, because some students have gone their entire high school life, have never had a tutor. When you say tutor to those students, they think that's for failing students. So if you make that a positive and just set that as part of the culture, I think it will make a tremendous difference that we change the culture.
Thank you. I agree.
Any other remarks or questions? Well, we'll recognize Louise Appleman.
Oh, oh, can I just say one more thing?
Oh, sure.
I, I do want to publicly thank everyone who contributed because, again, this presentation is a collaboration. We definitely wanted it to be something that anyone could use if they were asked, what is Tarrant County College doing to improve the success of its students? And then how do you know that what you're doing is working? So that's why we did that. And so I want to acknowledge our institutional research folks, our Title III folks, and certainly Shelly Birch for her hard work in getting this done. The last thing I'd like to do, if I may, is to acknowledge someone who's moving into a new role. And so is Alma here? Alma, stand up. Alma Martinez-Egger joined us in November of 2010 as our Interim Director for Title III, and she came in with an amazing amount of energy and enthusiasm, and the milestones that you heard today would not have been possible without the huge amount of effort that she has put forward. This month, she is moving into a new role with our Faculty Academy because we need her there. That's, you heard, professional development is a huge part of our work. So we wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank you, Alma, for all your hard work. She has helped us to lay a great foundation. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Louise Appleman, who has a resolution.
Thank you. Dr. Black, it has been my privilege in serving as the board's liaison representative to the Achieving the Dream team, and my pleasure to meet a terrific group of faculty, so impressive to watch them work, and basically, that's what I do. I just sit and watch them work, and many of them are in the room today, and we thank you on behalf of the board. We thank you because what you heard Dr. Braddy report on and what this faculty does in the Achieving the Dream work is, in addition to what they already have on their plates, the above and beyond comment comes to mind. We had our most recent gathering, November 30th and December 1st, and I think in your package, you have the agenda for those two days, which is fairly comprehensive and covers many, many topics. And if you're interested in any or all of those topics in detail, we have them for you, and you can read or listen to them. Our coaches were with us that day from the national organization, and they seem pleased with our progress to date, but, and you certainly just heard a report of some programs and processes that are in place that we're beginning to see some results. Chancellor Hadley described the team as a loving, caring group, and I agree, but I would also add professional, thoughtful, deliberate, and focused, and I think we're on our way. But it's time now for the board to reaffirm our support of this effort. There are a lot of moving parts, and it's new, and it's different, and it's challenging, and so it's worrisome. There is not yet 100% understanding our involvement on all the campuses. Our website is not yet fully utilized for information or direction. All the systems, procedures, and processes are not yet go, but they're getting there, and there are still some unanswered questions relative to authority, accountability, and direction. I love Dr. Black taught me a new term recently, analysis paralysis. And she said, we're beyond that, and she's right. The data has been accumulated and digested and regurgitated, and it's now time for us to determine what fits TCCD, what, what best addresses the needs of our students in assuring their success. So we have been asked to check in with and monitor with the other colleges, and you see that we have done that. We've been encouraged to continue our conversations with and coordination with the high schools in the area relative to Accuplacer issues, the bridge programs, which we heard about tonight, dual-credit, early college, high school, and equally important, our faculty development activities, giving faculty the opportunity to learn more about Achieving the Dream and feel comfortable with it so that they are committed to it, as I hope we will say we are later this evening, and ultimately conveying the mission of Achieving the Dream to the greater Tarrant County community. So, Shelly, if you will move to the resolution. The where-ases in this are, in essence, the purposes of the Achieving the Dream, keep scrolling, please, the history of our involvement in Achieving the Dream since 2010, and how it dovetails with our strategic planning effort, our institutional effectiveness plan, and what it is we hope to achieve as far as student learning success and the excellence in teaching and dynamic curricula. Effective- and how it dovetails with our strategic planning effort, our institutional effectiveness plan, and what it is we hope to achieve as far as student learning success, and the excellence in teaching and dynamic curricula, effective student support, and of course, the accessibility and diversity in our student community. So, keep going. Scroll, scroll, scroll. I, I'm asking this board tonight to consider and approve the acknowledgement with appreciation and admiration, the efforts of the faculty, staff, and students in pursuing Achieving the Dream, that we encourage and support the next phases of this initiative, and that we welcome and encourage the increased involvement of the entire TCCD learning community. If you approve it, I would ask all of us to sign on, literally, to the resolution. So I would move approval of this.
Excellent move. Wait, is there a second? There's a second, there are actually two seconds, so who won? I don't know. Leave that up to you. Let's say that Kristen Van der Grift seconded it. Would you like to make a statement? What, did you, did you raise your hand?
No, I was, I was talking to Reginald. I have a statement later, but you go ahead.
I'm sorry, you just raised your hand. Anyway, all in favor say aye. Aye. Of course, they're not opposed. Thank you very much, Louise.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Robinson has a piece for us to sign. Someone has a pretty resolution for us to sign.
And Ms. Appleman, thank you, thank you for what you're doing with Achieving the Dream. It's an excellent, you work so hard, and you go to all those meetings, and.
They have good cookies.
Good cookies. Will there be another, another meeting up in Santa Fe this year?
There's a conference.
Oh, you're going to talk about it.
There's a conference in Dallas, are you going to talk about that?
It'll come up later, okay.
Next month, that we're sending a delegation to.
I have to ask Reginald about that.
I think, is that not right, Dr. Black? There's a conference in Dallas, and our coaches will be back and will be meeting with us again.
Our coaches will be here in Dallas?
They will be at the six, at the institution.
In Dallas? Oh, that's coming up. See, I don't remember what my calendar is for one day to the next, unless I have a conflict with it. But Mr. Green, I would like to say a couple of things about the presentation. First of all, thank you, Dr. Gates Black, for that excellent recap. I think it was time for that. It's been a while since we've heard, and sometimes I think we surprise ourselves, the presidents are sitting here thinking, I'm not surprised, I know how hard we're working. But, but the, the one thing that I really want to say about that, I know sometimes you hear me talking, you know, you, I'm like that energized bunny, I think. You wind me up, and I never know when to stop talking about Tarrant County College, and you hear all of these different things. You know, I wake up in the middle of the night a lot of times thinking about, you know, just one more thing that we need to do for Tarrant County College. And I know sometimes, especially board members, will hear a lot of things, oh, you're doing this, and you're doing that, and you've got this person, and you've got that person, you've got all of this. As I was preparing for the retreat, and, and we're going to have a, a facilitator to help us, because we really want to get through some really tough topics and be timely and all of that. And as I told the facilitator, I need your help, because I talk too much, I can't facilitate this. Presidents are saying that's right. But, but what I said to him was, I, I want, I want us to, to think about all of these wonderful things that we've done. You, you've heard of several things. Is Rick Garcia in the room tonight? Stand up, Rick. I, I, we're going to introduce him later, I think, tonight, sometimes, but I'll just say it now, we'll, we'll get you up to the podium in a minute. But we have so many things to do with Achieving the Dream with our students when we get here. You heard Linda Braddy talk about, and everybody uses El Paso Community College as a model for how they've done exceptionally well with their Achieving the Dream success. And they are touted, I think, as such a model, because the vast majority of their students are Hispanic, low-income, first-generation college students. And the college has found a way to do a tremendous job. But as I was talking with Richard Rhodes at one point, telling him how jealous I was of all the success he was having in El Paso Community College, he said, oh, Irma, don't give me all the credit. He said, we were just able to get out to the ISDs and get them to work with us. And so we've been working as partners for a long time, and, and as you're going to hear in a few minutes, that's some of the main kind of work that Rick Garcia is going to expand upon. He's already been doing that. And is Karen Kussler in the room tonight? She's not here, I guess, tonight. You met her before, but Dr. Kussler is our Director of Assessment. Is that her whole title? Instructional Assessment. As we look at all of these things we're doing, and one of the things about Achieving the Dream, you can't just go out and do something. Everything you do has to be based on data, and you take that data and determine what you need to do with that data, and how you assess everything that you're doing, you know, looking at your student outcomes, and how do you measure all of those. It's a very intricate business that we're in here, and especially as we try to work with students who bring so many different levels of preparation to us. So I want to applaud Dr. Gates Black and all of the campus presidents in particular, along with Dr. Wells. Dr. Wells and Dr. Black are like tied at the hip with the Achieving the Dream. There, there's no way you can do it without both areas, the academic area as well as the student support area. Of course, it all happens on the campuses. That's where the rubber really meets the road. All the rest of us are expendable. Those people are not. And so thank, thank all of you, campus presidents, and, and the really good part about our two new presidents, they both come to us clearly steeped in Achieving the Dream. They know what it's all about, there's no learning curve for them, and it's very good. So thank you, team, we appreciate that.
Madam Chancellor, your next presentation is with Reginald Gates and Frank Griffiths, I believe?
Yes, and this one is going to be brief. We've, we've gone on quite some, some time, but you know, we, we are all here for, for the students and learning, and we think it's very important for trustees to know what we're doing, and especially to get reports like this.
Yeah.
Reginald?
The brevity rule kicks in on me, so. And what I'll do, actually.
Thank you for your present.
Oh, follow, go ahead. What I would like to do is introduce what I think is a real marketing opportunity for us, and I'd ask Frank to come up and intro the video.
Thanks. I'm very excited and pleased, Chancellor and board members, tonight to give you a preview of a segment on Tarrant County College that will be aired on the Learning Channel. It's called the Profile Series, and the Profile Series sticks to one subject and has several participants. We will be among five other participants, and the theme of this series is colleges and universities that are preparing students for the 21st century workforce. I don't know when it'll be aired yet, we just finished editing it. It will consist of, what we've, the package that we have is our segment that will be aired, and an eight-minute segment that they put together for us that we can use however we please, and a one-minute promo. This promo will be shown throughout Tarrant County, five different times, on MSNBC, the Fox Network, and also CNN. And so as soon as I know when it's going to be aired, we'll send out the alarm. It will be shown, their average viewership is 85 million people in North America. So I'm very excited about this. It took several days to film it, and we couldn't have done it without the, the help of Dr. Fulkerson and Dr. Stur, Brian Stewart and, and their team, because it took a lot of effort. And if you have any questions, I can answer them afterwards. Shelly?
Ralph Waldo Emerson once wrote, "Men love to wonder," and that is the seed of science. Today, all we have to do is look around, and we can see the bounty some of those scientific seeds has produced. And the world around us never fails to provide fertile ground for curious minds to continue exploring.
In any hospital, a quiet night can turn into a life and death crisis in a matter of seconds. To respond and save a patient in trauma, doctors, nurses, and healthcare professionals must react on their feet in a way that goes beyond any textbook or classroom lecture they may have mastered for their degree. It takes practical, real-life experience to refine the skills, talents, and emotional control to step into a crisis and prevent it from becoming a tragedy. This real-life, think-on-your-feet training is making nursing and allied healthcare students at Tarrant County College ready to walk off the stage at graduation and directly into hospitals, offices, and clinics with workforce-ready skills. Tarrant County College offers a multitude of credit and non-credit programs, and its mission focuses on affordability, accessibility, and flexibility. Its vision is to look to the future and to prepare students for the 21st century workforce. The most vivid example of this is their nursing and allied health programs at their new Trinity River East Campus for healthcare professions.
When our nurses, or when our physical therapists, or when our respiratory care specialists get into the hospital, they know what the nurses do, they know what the physical therapists do.
By 2015, there will be over 3,000 new jobs for registered nurses in Tarrant County. In order to meet that demand, Tarrant County College has crafted a curriculum that includes the necessary textbook and classroom learning. Then it recreates real-life hospital situations in order to turn that learning into practical knowledge. In the allied health programs, students can focus on critical health professions, including physical therapy assistant, long-term care, radiologic technology, surgical technology, health information technology, and respiratory care.
Tarrant County College has done a lot to make sure that our students are workforce-ready. Number one, we try to give them the absolute best faculty, as well as the best equipment that we can provide. And if you look around our campuses, of all of our technical programs, and especially those here at the Trinity River East Campus for the health professions, you will find everything is state-of-the-art. So where our students learn looks very much like where they will work.
Tarrant County College has created platforms to attract students as young as junior high all the way to adults, who may have lost their jobs or are looking to start a career in healthcare. Their pathways programs for people who cannot gain entry into other programs allow students to retake courses, raise their GPA, or choose a less rigorous program. No day in any hospital or health clinic is ever the same. That is why hands-on coursework, such as simulation hospitals and computerized mannequins, help give students the people skills, so that when they actually experience real-world healthcare, they are ready.
And stabilize it and insert the catheter.
The computerized mannequins are incredible learning tools that function as patients.
I'm so weak.
You are? Tell me what else you're feeling.
Any pain this morning?
My chest hurts.
Your chest hurts?
Hey, baby, hi.
Nursing students can practice procedures that can later be applied to real patients. The mannequins include a mother, a newborn, and a five-year-old. There also is one that speaks only Spanish.
Let me go ahead and take your blood pressure.
Siento que me voy a tumbar.
It is really essential for all students who are going into professional healthcare positions to have experience with patients who are alive, who need help. But before we put them in that setting, we want them to have as many opportunities to work with computerized mannequins, so that we can anticipate every possible scenario which our students would face.
The demand for healthcare professionals is very high. In addition to nursing, occupations, including allied health professionals, have many openings, and the opportunities are growing. All the healthcare programs offered at Tarrant County College are all fully accredited.
I hurt in my chest.
It hurts when I breathe.
Educating workforce-ready graduates is the primary goal of the healthcare curriculum at Tarrant County College. Exposing students to practical experience beyond the classrooms empowers the graduates to succeed today and lead the way towards tomorrow. For more information about Tarrant County College, log on to www.tccd.edu.
I wish I could take credit for that, but I can't. I had very little to do with it. But it was by recognition of our campus and all the publicity we've gotten that they found out about us. So getting that word out really helps. Any questions?
But before you answer their questions, I will tell you that the Discovery Channel did come to us. They had heard about us, they had learned about us around, and, and so they called to see if we would like to be one of the featured colleges, because they were so impressed by what they heard. And they interviewed me for about an hour and a half before they determined that we had a good story for them to tell. And then they came to look.
Took you that long?
Well, you know, I was, I was probably talking too much, you know how that goes. It probably could have been sooner than that. But they came to look and see, and they were very impressed, and, and this is the result of it. So we were very honored that we were, we were chosen to be highlighted.
Well, Frank, I, I have, I have a confession to make, this, as, as Tahita knows, that mannequin died on me at least four times. Because she was, I'm having a heart attack, and I go, ooh. During the tours, it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful.
Is this one of several, or that's the only one that will be shown?
It will be one of six. It'll be a 30-minute segment.
Six about us?
Pardon?
Six about Tarrant County College?
No, six other col, five other colleges, yeah. I don't know who they are yet, because my producer didn't know, but I'll find out, and I'll let you know, so.
That was the longest version?
No, we still have an eight-minute version.
That was only four minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
That's four to six minutes, and the eight-minute version is ours, we can do anything with these we want. The eight-minute version is just a longer one they cut for us, that we can use for recruitment or whatever.
Well, I, I've seen all three of the versions, and I was thinking that was eight minutes, but that was less than eight, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next thing on our agenda is to, we've got another bust in our, in our minutes for November the 17th. On page five of the minutes, you'll notice something that's been highlighted. The old minutes mistakenly had $1.8 billion, that's 1.800B, and that number should have been 1.008 billion instead. So I will entertain a motion to, unless there's discussion about that, which I doubt, so moved, to rescind those minutes. And is this seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as revised. Is there a motion? So moved? Okay. Conrad Heat, seconded by, by, okay, Carter. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. Now we need to approve the minutes for our very short meeting on December the 14th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
No.
So moved. Is there a second? Second by Conrad Heat. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We're now going to the consent agenda, and I think that Mr. Heat has a comment he'd like to make about the consent agenda.
I would. To state the obvious.
Turn your mic on, Mr. Heat. Your mic didn't play on.
There it is. He's.
It went on for a little while.
For the board, this is now.
Yeah, to state the obvious, it, it's absolutely essential that trustees are fully trained and knowledgeable in the things that they need to know to make responsible decisions. And, and I would like to say that, I, I would like to thank and, and compliment the faculty and the staff and the chancellor for all the help that they've given me to become more familiar with the things that, that we are responsible for, and, and to become knowledgeable about, in order to make the best possible decisions on behalf of, of the college. With, with that in mind, as opposed to the consent, consent agenda of the last meeting, I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda. I feel very comfortable and may fit the process and the things that are on it, so.
Thank you very much. And our, we, the staff has helped all of us to understand, because we all ask them questions and, and have gotten some very good, very good answers, very thorough answers. Is there, is there a, any, anybody, notwithstanding the motion, anybody like to pull something from the, I hear none. from the, I hear none. So will you make your motion again?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Kristin Vandergriff. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. This is the, takes care of the consent agenda, and we now go to committee reports. Mrs. Appleman, you have a report for the finance committee?
Only that we will be meeting on the 31st.
31st?
To consider several items, including the investment policy.
Thank you very much. Governance committee, that's, we don't have anything to report. We just met and set, helped set the agenda. Since there are no, there's no action for committee recommendations, we'll pass on to TCC Foundation updates. And that's Ms. Hadley. We're going to introduce Joe McIntosh. And Ms. Teague, is she here?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I am very pleased to bring to the microphone Dr. Joe McIntosh, who is our executive director of the Tarrant County College Foundation, and he is accompanied by the Tarrant County College Foundation Board President, who is a fairly frequent visitor with us these days. Ms. Jenny Tighe, thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate having you. They both are bearers of good news. So, Joe, you're on.
Well, thank you. I know the word for the evening is brief, so I'll try my best to honor that. Let me get all of my paraphernalia here arranged. We want, we appreciate the opportunity of getting to come for you tonight, board trustees, Mr. President and Chancellor, to report on some major initiatives during the fall, this being your first meeting of the new year. This has been the first opportunity. So if you would, please, we'll kind of follow the PowerPoint here. First of all, as we've done in past years, we bring a great glowing report about TCC employees, and the fact that they are such a generous group and a family that believes in supporting things close to home and being a part of the efforts that we're about every day. In our fall Tarrant County College Employee Annual Giving Campaign, $192,759 was contributed and pledged. Of this amount, $163,157 was designated to Tarrant County College Foundation Scholarships, and this is a 4.6 increase over last year's designation to the foundation. In addition, we run this campaign simultaneous to our effort promoting United Way and local causes here in Tarrant County. So almost $30,000 was given or designated to United Way. Thirty-eight percent of the TCC family participated in the, in the special emphasis, the campaign, and we reached 110% of goal for, for the effort. I especially want to recognize one particular group. The initiative is organized according to the Celt divisions, and each of the leaders in the Celt are behind this and have supported it. I'm proud to tell you that every one of them participate individually, and they rally the troops so that all their particular divisions support this effort. But one group in particular hit a home run, Mr. Carter. In fact, we kind of use the terminology that this was our fall classic, kind of in the shadow of our beloved Texas Rangers, because we were running this during the same time of their World Series run. But Nina Petty's division, our vice chancellor of facilities and real estate, her group increased their participation by 100%, and it was a very significant effort.[872.63][872.63](applause) And, yes, very much do. And this in large part was due, and I think Nina would be the first to say this, by her campaign manager. Each Celt person appoints or encourages, enlists, volunteers, whatever the correct word is, a person to lead their particular effort. And DJ Massey led Nina's effort. And DJ, if you would come to the front, we'd like to make a special presentation to you. And I have tonight, also, I want to recognize Liz Sisk. Liz is the donor, one of our donor relations officers in the foundation, but Liz is the brains and the coordinator and the chief cheerleader for the Employee Annual Giving Campaign. And I'd like to present something to you, DJ, the Fall Classic MVP Award.[934.82][934.82](laughter) This is presented to DJ Massey for outstanding leadership and stellar results for the 2011-12 TCC Employee Annual Giving Campaign, and this is with gratitude and sincere appreciation from the Tarrant County College Foundation. And we'd like to get a group picture, if we would. DJ, if you'd come to the front, and Liz, and Nina, if you would be in this as well, and Chancellor, if we could line up and get a picture of this.
Well, while DJ is coming, I just want to say Ricardo Coronado is sitting back there on the back row beaming, because he will tell you that he trained her.[979.04][979.04](laughter) DJ worked in the human resources offices for Dr. Coronado for a long time, so she's a great people person.
Come on, Bill.
Huh?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if we can get everybody lined up here, all right?
You might as well come on, just president, president of the foundation, just come to this.
All right, thank you very much.[1031.36][1031.36](applause) And I might say that Nina's division has one of the largest group of employees in the college district, so to make that achievement was very significant. I'll ask Virginia Jenny Tighe to stand here with me during this next section, because this was another one of our special initiatives for the fall. A Little River Music held October 21st, and this was a special night. Many of you were there. Thank you for being there. It was a, our annual fundraising event, but this past year, we determined to celebrate the opening of the new Trinity River East Campus. A great host of people came, the Fort Worth Symphony played a wonderful concert. I think it was a great evening and was enjoyed by all. What made it especially nice was the sponsors that supported the evening, and I want, if you would take special attention, give special attention to each of the names, as I won't read them all to you, but I think you can pick out most of these. However, our lead sponsor for the evening was Texas Health Resources. Our next level was an anonymous donor, Bennett Benner Pettit, and then BNSF Foundation, as well as Radio Shack. Our next group, you can see here, and you'll recognize some names, even folks in this room that gave significant support and helped that evening. And then underwriting for the, for the program, and then special in-kind support. Again, all of it, and there's some more. This is what it's all about. The TCC Foundation thanks all for your support of scholarships and programs. $133,000 plus in net proceeds were raised that night to benefit TCC students and their Now, the Tarrant County College Foundation Board met and determined how these proceeds are to be allocated. Of course, they all are for scholarships and programs that benefit the college district. But a very special allocation was determined to be made this year, and I'd like Dr. Tahida Fullkerson to come to the podium, and then Ms. Tighe, if you'll read a presentation here. You may want to step back, it's kind of awkward here, but.
I'll just speak up, I think. One of our major donations was, is to you all, and I would love to read this. As you all saw the wonderful.
Jenny, excuse me, please speak into the mic, because otherwise it won't pick up for the broadcast.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. As you all saw the wonderful video of the Trinity campus and what goes on there, we are able, with our foundation, to help support these nursing students, and we are just thrilled to be able to do that. This evening was an absolutely wonderful evening. We had perfect weather, showed the beautiful campus off to so many people, and we were just so delighted to do that. And as a result, a portion of this money we are giving in honor of the inaugural faculty and staff of Trinity River East Campus. And in recognition of their dedication and commitment to distinctive and quality preparation of our community's next healthcare professionals, Tarrant County College Foundation has established the TCC Foundation Healthcare Profession Scholarship. Two scholarships to be awarded annually and in perpetuity, beginning fall 2012-2013 academic year. The funds for the proceeds of A Little River Music, hosted October 11th by the TCC Foundation, and held at Trinity River East Campus, presented with much appreciation January 19th, 2012, Tarrant County College Foundation Board of Directors. We're so happy to give that to you. Thank you so much.[1309.13][1309.13](applause)
If we could get another photo, Chancellor, we'll this time have Ms. Appleman and Ms. Vandergriff, if you will join this group, as our current board of trustees, and Bill, join the group as well, if we could memorialize this.[1326.13][1326.13](laughter) Again, the words "given in honor of," and we especially want to pay tribute to this inaugural faculty and all the work and extra work that they've done getting the campus ready and allowing thousands and thousands of people to come through and see all the many good things that happen, so.
Thank you. Just thank you for supporting.[1361.13][1361.13](applause)
Now, I'd like to report to you, each year, the foundation has an annual audit, and wanted to just point out a couple of key things about that this year. First of all, all of the foundation financial information is posted on the foundation website, and it's available for the public to go to. Sometimes the filing period is somewhat delayed, or when the audit is actually completed, so these dates will change sometimes through the year, but please make note of the fact that that's where this information is always accessible. Let me drill down into our audit this year and point out a couple of key things. First of all, the auditors is the Weaver firm, and they gave a glowing report, had no findings, and I guess the term, Mark, is a clean audit, and that's a unqualified opinion. Yes. So we are grateful for that. Couple of key things, if you'll note, and again, this is for our fiscal year, ending August 31st, 2011. The total assets for the foundation were just under $6 million. That's an increase of about $700,000 from the previous year. So it was good, healthy year. In addition, and I don't have the slide to show you, but also during this time period, just short of $1 million was contributed back to the college, as well as in support of programs and students attending Tarrant County College. So assets grew, as well as $1 million coming back to the college as well. Again, that's just kind of the high points. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and please explore those numbers and contact us if you'd like more information about that.
Thank you, Joe.
Any clue as to what next year's, is that going to be a surprise?
The ideas are clicking.
The ideas are clicking. I know it'll be good. It's going to be hard to beat last year. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We had some excitement over the, over the holiday. One of them is on the agenda, and you're going to talk about it, but I think our esteemed lawyer saved the day. Was it you saved the day with the erupting toilet up somewhere on the second floor?[1536.63][1536.63](laughter) That was one of the emergencies, but now we'll.
I think it was a pipe.
It's a pipe.[1542.25][1542.25](laughter) I thought it was a toilet.[1544.41][1544.41](laughter) I thought it was in the men's restroom, we were trying to, who was it?
But it was a pipe.
Okay.[1553.75][1553.75](laughter) Well, anyway, let's just talk about another emergency. This was, this was more expensive, but we are under construction up there.
Well, it, you know, this one too involves water, but there's a report in your packet, and I put it there just as an item of information, and I want to give a special thank you to Nina Petty and her team, and especially David Hokey, who led that effort. Not sure if David is in the room tonight, but if he watches this, as he's supposed to tomorrow night when he gets home, he can see that I called his name, because he always does such a great job. But David's goal was to make sure that Dr. Jordan and his staff were able to start classes on Tuesday without interruption, and so they worked all weekend to get that done. It was done, and classes were able to get started on time. And Ms. Petty, if you would like to say anything else about that emergency, that's about it? It's, that's about it? Yes, that's, I'm not sure how much it cost us to repair. I think it's in your book. It was probably over the threshold of what you'd like to do, but I knew you wouldn't want me to wait until today and to get that started, so we went ahead with this. I'm presenting it to you for your information. So if there are any questions, Nina can answer those questions for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, we're going to consider oil and gas lease approval for Vantage Drilling. I think.
I'm pleased to bring to the podium Mark McClan, and our CFO, who is going to bring you more good news.
Was better the way. Welcome back after the new year, and we look forward to bringing a lot of good news to you. I'm going to go ahead and read some things. First of all, could we bring up the map? All right. Okay. What you're looking right now is at the Opportunity Center, right there. All right? You're seeing, what you will see is two pieces of property, and one in the center is the one that's being considered to be purchased. If you see the items that are being highlighted in blue and in white. And what we are asking, if you look at the two centers, now, now we can go to the, to the next picture. Now we'll give you the lease map. The other one, the next one. I think the other one will be a little bit easier for you all to look at. And what about the one further? Okay. Anyways, if we look at the property, the Opportunity Center, the two properties consist of 7.7 acres of mineral rights. Vantage was the highest bidder on the properties adjacent to the independent school district properties, including Dunbar and the middle high schools. Vantage bid $15,000 per net mineral acre and 25% royalties on a basis of 500 acres. Vantage offered us, hereby offers to Tarrant County College, for the 7.7 acres, a bonus of 15K per acre for the 7.7, which comes out to a bonus payment of 116K, and it's also going to give us a royalty of 25K. This has been the highest bonus payment and royalty payment that has been in this area. The development plan is going to be done over the 500 acres, and there's going to be about eight wells. This is, we have a representative here. This is, we have a representative here, the term is, this is a non-surface lease, being that we're not going to drill on this property, all right? The timing of the lease is about to commence, is going to be for about two years. And I wanted to give you a statement on the community. Over 1,500 residents in the neighborhood surrounding TCC have signed oil and gas leases. Vantage has actually injected a lot of money, thousands of dollars into the community and this is a great participation so that whole 500 acres could take advantage of it. I'd like to introduce now Mr. Bob Rowe, who is from Vantage Energy also here. He's here to talk to you for any questions you may have or even to elaborate a little bit on the development plan if you would like, sir.
Good evening. Is there any questions I can answer about this?
Where's the drill site?
Well, we've got two viable drill sites, one being directly south of the college there. And then we've got one, if you kind of look to the right, to the east of the site up there, which is Willard Road, we have another site up there that is being prepared, well, not prepared at the moment. It's actually being applied for with the city of Fort Worth, which should be done any day.
Do you anticipate any, some drill sites have problems in some neighborhoods. I see there's a multifamily, is that multifamily or a single family?
It's a single family up there.
Do you anticipate any problems with the neighborhood? Have you heard anything about your drill sites that would delay any kind of?
There's been no, nothing against us at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Where we're planning on developing is all open land over there. It's roughly about 10 acres.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
The church, when you say south of our property, do you mean there near the church?
Yes, direct, down south of there, there's open property down there, there you go. Actually, closer to 820.
Have they agreed to the?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
That was easy.
That's easy.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming. I think the church is.
The action will be then to authorize the chancellor to approve the lease.
Excuse me, I was talking to the chancellor. Thank you very much.
I think there's one thing, Joe, make sure you get in the minutes, he meant 25% royalty. He didn't mean $25,000. We don't have a clue about what the royalty payments will be at this point. You meant 25%.
Yes, ma'am, it's 25% royalties. The revenue is, will be determined once we do the drilling.
I just wanted to clarify that for our note taker, minute taker. I'm sorry.
What did I hear, something about no drilling?
On our property.
It'll be under at the drill site, it'll be horizontal drilling and so there will not be any drilling on our site, but on other places.
Yes, ma'am. What it is, it's horizontal drilling, it's about 6,000 feet and if, when you pass through our property, if we didn't give them authority, they would be, it's called mineral trespassing, so that they would need that. But yes, ma'am, that is horizontal drilling and the drilling is going to be on the south and it runs all the way through underground.
Does the lease, there is something in leases where the company can come back and deduct from the lease payments, the royalty, certain developmental expenses?
It's a non, it's a non-cost.
Okay.
Would you make that, I'm sorry.
It's a no-cost lease. This lease that we've submitted to TCC is the same lease that was approved and used by the Fort Worth ISD.
That's important, that can reduce your royalties by a significant amount.
Yes, it would reduce it significantly, but we're taking in all the cost on the production, drying, compressing, et cetera.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question that's completely unrelated to the lease, but are you aware that we have some training programs in our continuing ad to train employees to work on these? Dr. Jo Bagley is standing up, she see her, raise your hand back there. Talk to Dr. Jo and see if she doesn't have some students that you can put to work when they graduate from the program to help you with your work as you.
She's always working.
Certainly propose that to Vantage.
Absolutely, do that, please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we need a motion, sir?
Yes, sir, any?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chancellor to negotiate this lease.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all in favor. All opposed, none. Did you have a, no, okay. I'm sorry. Monthly financial report?
Mr. President and board members, we have a typical financial report this evening. We've been so very, very long on all this great academic information. Do you need to hear from Mark McLendon on that report? Do you want to move to adopt it as is presented in your notebooks? Do you have any questions for him? If you don't, we can, Mark, you have something you need to say?
Madam Chancellor, I'm fine with the financial. I would like to give the investment report if that's okay with you. We give that every month.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay. Could we bring that up? Okay, I'll just run through it quickly. Basically, what we have, we had an injection of $50 million from tax cash in and that's where you see your tax pools will go up from 78 mil to 128, so that's in our tax pools that we got during the month. We had one security that was matured, the other ones was recalled and we went ahead and invested in Fannie Mae, another 10 mil. If we look at the overall interest rate, as we come down, our results are still ahead, always ahead against T-bills and we're looking on the 13 week, we're looking at .65 and on the 26 week, we're looking at .62. Any questions on the investments? All right.
No, thank you.
Since he talked about the investments, I will just tell you, is Nancy here tonight? She was here earlier. Nancy and Mark are always bragging about how well we do with our investments compared to what some of the other institutions would have investment advisors are doing. As a matter of fact, I've asked him to get a report for the Budget and Finance Committee to take a look at. They have quite a bit for which to be proud, so we'll be bragging about that more a little bit later. Thank you, Mark.
You're up.
Thank you. The first, Mr. President and board members.
Here we go.
I can't get any juice on my microphone, I guess I've talked it out. While you won't come on anymore. Thank you. We have quite a few staff introductions to make this evening and I want to start with our two new presidents and I'll start with Dr. Bill Coppola, who is the new president of the Southeast Campus. And Dr. Coppola came to us extremely well-prepared for this position. He has worked in a number of positions, but the one thing that really perhaps stands out about his long tenure is that Lone Star College got him and fell in love with him. So he's been there for quite a long time, serving, when we took him away from Lone Star, he was the Executive Director of Academic Partnerships and Initiatives and that's going to really come in handy for us, Bill. He also at Lone Star served as the Vice President for Instruction and the Chief Academic Officer. He served as the Dean of Instruction of Mass Science and Healthcare, the Dean of Instruction for Computer Information and Applied Technology. Before that, he was at Maricopa Community College, one of the largest in the world, I guess, as a Senior Associate Dean and Director of the City Colleges Center. He was also the Senior Associate Dean of Instruction at Maricopa. And prior to that, he was at another big community college over to our east, Dallas County Community College District, where he was the Senior Associate Dean, he was the Associate Dean of Technology and Occupational Programs. And one of the things on our agenda for the retreat is to talk about our occupational programs and the need to expand the offerings that we have at Tarrant County College, so that will come in very handy for Bill. In addition to that, he knows how to teach, he's been a faculty member and that's always very good. He's taught both at Dallas County Community College District as well as Northern Arizona University. Dr. Coppola has a bachelor's degree from Michigan State University in telecommunications. He has done further study, before he got his bachelor's degree, I should say, at New York Institute of Technology and Communications. He receives his Master's of Education degree from the University of North Texas in vocational and occupational education and a PhD in Higher Education Administration from the University of North Texas. So help me welcome Dr. Bill Coppola, President of our Southeast Campus. And it is Coppola.
It is.
Until, until he's in certain conditions and then it's Coppola, okay?
There you go. Don't touch it. It's on, okay. Chancellor Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, members of the board, I want to once again officially thank you for giving me the opportunity to work with the faculty, the staff and the students of the Southeast Campus. They have just been wonderful. It's been just under three weeks now that both Peter and I have been here. It feels a whole lot longer and that's good. That's a, I mean, and I say that feeling good because I'm so comfortable on that campus. From day one that I stepped on foot on that campus, people have just embraced me and helped me. And every day that I'm there, I smile and reconfirms that this is such a good match for me to be at that college, but also to be within this district, just a leading district. And one of the reasons I really wanted to come here is because of the vision that I see coming down for the next five to 10 years with achieving the dream and all the initiatives that are coming. I would be remiss if I also didn't thank the fellow Celt members. You have a fantastic team here, as you know, and when we talked early on, you said this is a great team and they have from day one stepped up and said, what do you need, Bill? And stepped and helped me tremendously and without that support, it is truly a family here, as it is said many times, and it's a wonderful team and I am very glad to be here and I'm looking forward to a great year. Thank you very much.
And now for Dr. Peter Jordan. Dr. Jordan also brings a wealth of experience with him to Tarrant County College District. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree in English and History from Colby College in Waterville, Maine, a Master's of Science degree in Operations Management from Polytechnic Institute of New York University in Brooklyn. Postgraduate studies he's done at St. John's University in Jamaica, New York, in instructional leadership and learning styles. Millennium, he's also attended the Millennium Leaders Institute in Understanding and Solving Complex Business Issues and Problems at MIT. He's attended a program on negotiation for senior executives at the Harvard Law School, Change Management at Cornell University, Foundations of Leadership at MIT, the Assessment Institute with the American College Testing Association Organization, and he has his EDD from the University of Pennsylvania at Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in Higher Education Management. Dr. Jordan has been involved in education for over 30 years and he leaves his post as Vice President for Student Affairs at LaGuardia Community College in Queens, New York, to take over as our South Campus President. He's also served as, for seven years, as the Enrollment Management, the Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Development at LaGuardia. And prior to that, he was the interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs at the City University of New York. We welcome Dr. Peter Jordan to the South Campus. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, for that introduction. I had forgotten about all of those places and all of those classrooms I've spent time in, seriously, though. I am really appreciative, Chancellor Hadley, of your appointment of me to this post and I am delighted. To President Greenhill, members of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank you for joining the Tarrant County College community and embracing me in this position and welcoming me to this family of Tarrant County College District. It has been quite a ride since I've arrived here. I have never felt so, so supported in my career and I look forward to working with you. I want to thank each of you, especially members of the board, who were able to join us on Wednesday for the presidential reception on the South Campus. That was just an awesome experience. It started out with an awesome ride. I was picked up in the purple Prowler, a 1979 Chevy and taken to my reception. What else could a guy ask for? You know, but I'm sure there's, there will be lots of challenges ahead and I look forward to your leadership as a board and to working with each and every one of you. I do want to say, as Dr. Coppola pointed out, thank you to members of the Celt for your support, for reaching out to me, to our Human Resources Department for educating me. I should probably add this education to my list of ongoing education, but thank you very much and especially to members of our campus. I hope they're still here for the wonderful report tonight, but for the awesome education I'm getting on the campus as well and for embracing me. So thank you very, very much. I am delighted to be here. As one of our senior education staff members said to me this morning as I was talking to them, just tell everyone you couldn't wait to be here in Fort Worth and in Texas. And I said, yes, of course, so much so, I left my wife behind. So I am glad to be here. I am truly excited and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Coppola, Dr. Jordan, welcome. We are so very pleased to welcome you among our family. Board members, just hang on for a minute, we have quite a few new people and these people primarily are replacements or they're in new positions and the first one we're going to hear from is Dr. David Wells has one to introduce. Dr. Wells?
Thank you very much, Ms. Hadley. If you will remember the presentation that we began the board meeting with the information from South Campus and then Joy's great report on our status on achieving the dream, one of the things that you'll recall from that is our ongoing involvement and growing involvement with the independent school districts in the area and our corresponding focus on trying to meet the needs of the developmental education students that we have. I want to read just a little bit from the rationale that we used when we presented to the chancellor, the recommendation to move Rick Garcia from the Student Development Services area over to Academic Affairs. We have anticipated the increasing connections that we have with the independent school districts, but I don't think we've anticipated the acceleration of those connections and the increasing need for services that the school districts request from us. We've never before had the level of involvement and engagement with the ISDs that we have now and we can reasonably expect those connections are only going to increase over time and become more complicated. While we recognize that often ISDs want things done their way, a singular voice recommending consistent guidelines identifying and promulgating best practices. consistent guidelines identifying and promulgating best practices on our campuses is of critical importance. This move is consistent with creating student success and undergirding Vision 2015 and achieving the dream. It celebrates Rick's skills and talents and lays out the aggressive approach that the district will take in working much more closely with our ISD partners. When I tell you a little bit about Rick's background, you'll understand why I'm saying that. Because even though he has served the college as, as Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Development Services, his background is very clearly in working and strengthening programs in developmental education and working with the independent school districts. He's, has been the Associate Dean of Student Development and Vice Principal of the Richland College Collegiate High School for Science and Engineering at Richland College in Dallas. He's been Dean of Outreach and Student Development at Eastfield College and Executive Dean of Mathematics and College Readiness at Eastfield College in Dallas. More recently, of course, he served as our Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success at the college. But prior to his community college experience, he taught at the elementary and secondary school level and at the university level, and he served as Counselor and Assistant Principal in the Dallas Independent School District. He holds the Bachelor of Education and Master of Science from Texas A&amp;M Commerce, a certification in Educational Administration from the University of Texas at Arlington, and is beginning his PhD program at the University of North Texas this coming summer. He, he has worked already very closely with the independent school districts in, in the county, in his role as P through 16 Appointed Representative for the college, and he has already made connections with a number of school districts. And I've been in two events this past week where I got cornered by superintendents that Rick has already been talking to about dual credit program and about college readiness incentives. If you, if you go to the Fort Worth Symphony Orchestra, you might see him performing with them because he also has a Master of Music degree from Wichita State University and performs with the symphony from time to time. He and his wife Beth have two teenage daughters, Lee and Meg. They enjoy traveling, hiking, and attending the annual Fort Worth Stock Show. I'm proud to have him here, almost as proud as Joy and I are to have Bill and Peter here. Rick?
Thank you, David. Chancellor, Mr. President, Board members, trustees, it's a pleasure to be here, and it's wonderful to be taking on this position. I feel like the last 10 years, I've been kind of like Rocky training in developmental education, early college, high school, dual credit program, so this is a perfect for me as well. I do want to take a moment to thank Joy Gates Black for bringing me to TCC because with her, I was able to learn quite a bit, and she mentored me all the way through these last three or four years where my career has really accelerated quite fast. So thank you, Joy. And I know I've, I've got a lot of work ahead of me, but I've got some great people to be working with in developmental education in college readiness, and I'm delighted to be taking on the task. Thank you.
And the next person up is Dr. Tahita Fulkerson, who has a person to present to us tonight.
Madam Chancellor, Mr. Greenhill, and members of the board, I am so honored to introduce to you Wendy Jasper Martinez. She is our Director of Academic Affairs and Weekend College. She has a professional background that includes nearly 20 years in law enforcement, corrections, and education. Brian and I thought that we were really interviewing her well and that she wanted just to come because of us, but I looked out the window and there was the jail right across, so I'm thinking, she thinks she can have the best of both worlds. Prior to accepting the position with us, she was a sergeant at the Walker County Sheriff's Department in Huntsville. She has been a Department Chair for Criminal Justice Program at Remington College, North Houston, and manager of a law enforcement agency at Lone Star College in University Park. But she's also an educator. She has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Sam Houston State and a Master's of Public Administration from Stephen F. Austin, and she's working on her doctorate in Adult Education at Texas A&amp;M. She's a native of Huntsville, and she's also lived in other cities, but now she's in Bedford, and she has a darling nine-year-old son and a husband, Ron, and we already are becoming dependent on her. I'm so glad to introduce you to Wendy Jasper Martinez.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, members of the board, Dr. Fulkerson and Dr. Stewart, who's hiding back there behind me. I can't tell you how pleased I am to be here. I have wanted to come up here for a long time. I did my research, and I can tell you that the Trinity River Campus is the most wonderful place I've ever been. And, and I am a little biased, I am a little biased. Already, in just the past two weeks, I have seen that our campus is growing, that there is so much potential for the students, not only in regular programs but also in the weekend college. I do have some immediate goals to work with our advisors, get all of those students on a graduation track, learn what else we can add to the program, discover marketing opportunities to get the word out about Weekend College, and I'm taking every opportunity to shadow Dr. Stewart in all of our Academic Affairs meetings so that I can learn every nuance of this new job. This is considerably different from what I've done in the past. Law enforcement education is, is fairly compartmentalized. So I am excited, I'm ready to work, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Well, we welcome you, and every time I go to Livingston from now, when I pass by the maximum security jail, I'll think about you. Right there on 190. I pass by quite a bit. Welcome, we're glad you're here. And Rick, I didn't say to you how pleased we are, I guess I said it earlier, to have you in your new role. Really appreciate that, looking forward to great things. And now Reginald Gates has a person to introduce.
Thank you, Chancellor, Mr. President, and Board. I have the pleasure this evening of introducing new team member, Ms. Heidi Yapel. Heidi earned a Bachelor of Science degree in History and Political Science and completed secondary teacher education and training from Illinois State University. Heidi has spent over 15 years working for Indian tribes in the Northwest Lower Michigan area, beginning her employment as an adult education instructor in a federally funded program. As the program funding ended, Heidi co-authored a new adult education proposal that was fully funded by the U.S. Department of Education and ranked number one in the competition. Heidi received her Master's of Education Leadership Degree from Grand Valley State University. As a grant professional, Heidi has secured well over $20 million from public and private grant-funded programs, covering a variety of topics and services. In addition, Heidi has been responsible for compliance and oversight for multiple grants. Her experience includes establishing a grant development and compliance office where she secured funding and provided compliance for oversight, rather, for over 40 grants on a continuous basis. Heidi, in a personal interest, she's focused on working with people in Africa, where she has traveled to Kenya over four times and hopes to continue her involvement there in the future. And much like Peter Jordan, she wanted to get here so quickly, she left her husband in Michigan. Ms. Heidi?
That was what I was going to share, that I left my husband behind too. I was so eager to get here. Most of us FaceTimes in our careers where we're ready for a change and ready for transition, and I had reached one of those points in the last few months and, and started scouring, help wanted, you know, things that related to grants and grant development, especially, it didn't matter, it didn't have to be in northern Michigan. When I read the job description for this position, it was really exciting because I felt it took all of the things that I had been doing and took it to the next level. But what makes it even better is that I'm part of a team, and it is so much fun working with other people that have similar interests and backgrounds, and we can all be supportive of each other. The first couple of weeks that I was here, I started December 5th, I was so overwhelmed with the, the welcome and the acceptance of me as being part of that team, that when we went on Christmas break, I just would sit there and think, I can't believe it, I can't believe it. Another good reason to be here today is in the last 36 hours, where my house is in Michigan, they've had six to 10 inches of snow and it's blowing. So thank you very much.
Well, welcome, Heidi. We are very, very pleased to have you with us.
She says she's from northern Michigan. I'm like, what does that mean? I mean, north? Michigan for us is north.
And Angela Robinson is next. She has a person to introduce.
I'm pleased to introduce the new Dean of the Faculty Academy. This was a position that was left vacant when Terri Schrantz went back to teaching. Dr. Terri Mouchele served as a Director of Professional Development and Evaluation Programs at Austin Community College for the last 12 years. During that time, she also served as Project Director under the Texas Network for Teaching Excellence, a statewide professional development site funded by a Perkins Leadership Grant. Before joining Austin Community College, she was an English professor at Amarillo College for 18 years, and while there, she designed the institution's first English placement exam. She received her Bachelor's in English from Oklahoma State University and her Master's also in English from the University of Central Oklahoma. She received her PhD in Higher Education Administration from the University of Texas at Austin, and her dissertation research focused on recruiting and retaining new generations of community college faculty. Let's welcome Dr. Terri Mouchele.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, Chancellor Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, Board of Trustees. I'm, I am too very, very pleased to be here. I'm excited. I became familiar with the Faculty Academy last summer because Professor Schrantz called me in Austin and said, we need to talk about some of the things that would be important in this academy. And I was very impressed with the dedication of the institution to faculty development. And then she had me come out to speak in August, and I was impressed all over again. And so when this position came open, I, I decided to make the change that Heidi talked about, and I left a husband behind in Austin, so it's not quite as far, and he's not cold, and there's no snow on him anywhere. And also left behind a 22-year-old daughter who is so happy to be left behind that she just can't stand it any longer. But I am very much looking forward to being here. I have appreciated the support that the other speakers have talked about. I left an institution with very kind people and came to an institution with very kind, supportive people. I'm looking forward to working with everyone, with Ms. Robinson, Chancellor Hadley, all the friends I've had here for quite some time, and Dr. Coronado. So I'm looking forward to a very good year. This is going to be excellent. I'm excited, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome, and we are very, very pleased that you're here. Dr. Darlage, you're up next with your new, well, not so new, but in a new role.
Mr. Greenhill.
He's about, he's about as new as I am, as a matter of fact.
Mr. Greenhill, Board members, Chancellor Hadley, it's, it's a pleasure for me to announce that Gary Smith, who's been faithfully serving the district for, well, since the first brick, I think he and, he and his wife laid the first brick on the, on the South Campus. He started it out on the South Campus. But he attended Baylor University, where he earned his Bachelor's degree in History and a Master's in Biology, and, and he has additional graduate work at the University of Texas Austin, Texas A&amp;M University Commerce, and the University of North Texas. And he's held teaching and academic leadership positions on three of the campuses so far. It's still, he's still young. After graduation, Gary accepted a Biology position at the University of Texas in Arlington, and then when TCJC opened the South Campus in 1967, they stole him away from UT Arlington, and he was teaching at then the South Campus. In 1975, he transferred to the, the new Northwest Campus, where he was Chair of the Department of Science, Math, History, and Government. And in 1981, Gary moved to the Northeast Campus, where he began teaching Biology. And since then, he's been a Department Chair of Natural Sciences, has served as the Dean of Science and Technology, and most recently as the interim Vice President for Academic Affairs for a year and a half. And just to mention a few of the awards, and most of these are in the, in the teaching field, Gary received the Minnie Piper Stevens Award for Teaching Excellence in the state of Texas, the Chancellor's Award for Exemplary Teaching, the Science Department Award, the Herman Crowe Branding Art Award for Outstanding Educational Leadership in the Community, and he was named the Hometown Hero for TCC Northeast Campus at the annual Northeast Tarrant County Chamber of Commerce last spring. Please welcome Gary Smith.
I just told Dr. Ricardo it's lucky and amazing that I'm still up this hour, my age. Also would like to indicate, my wife and, my spouse is at home. She better be, so I didn't leave anybody anywhere, you know, as far as that goes. But the way I got to Tarrant County College was, as Dr. Darlage indicated, I was teaching at, at University of Texas Arlington, and three, I was a biologist, and three biology members left and came to the South Campus, got jobs, and they were coming to the South Campus. And they called me one day before it all got started, and they said, Gary, you really need to come over here and join us. Said, this is going to be a great place. Said, it's going to be a place where we can do what we want in the class, we can innovate, we can create, we're not going to be stuck by tradition and all of that, so you really should come. So I investigated it and, and went to the South Campus, and I found out that they were exactly true, that Dr. Rushing, his mantra was innovate, innovate, create, we want you to do new things, try new things, we want to be leaders in the nation in innovation and creativity, and we were. We, we reached that. It was a lot of work, we had a lot of ups and downs, but it was fun. When I went to the Northwest Campus, again, the South Campus, you know, was starting a new college. When we went to Northwest Campus, again, it was starting a new college, and it was the same thing. We, it was a lot of work, it was challenges, but it was fun. I can remember, one of my memories of the challenges was, some of you will remember, that on Northwest, we couldn't open the first semester because we had a construction strike. And so we taught at Castleberry High School from 4:30 to 10:30 at night in the fall. At that time, because Tarrant County didn't pay that well at that time, I had a little hatchback Pinto. And so we didn't have any equipment, so what I would do would drive over to the South Campus and load up the equipment in the mornings, drive back and use the equipment to teach at Castleberry, then I'd put it back in my little Pinto and I'd drive it back the next morning. So I was, and I had a friend that went with me, it was one of the skeletons, and I put him in the passenger side, and I got stopped one night by the police telling me that I, it was illegal to be driving around town with a skeleton in the passenger seat. And I asked him, why? Because he had on his seatbelt. And they, it might have been the hat and the cigarette that I had put on him. But it was, you know, it was fun. It was challenging, it was fun. And this year, I started thinking that Tarrant County is not the same college that I came to. The last two, three years, particularly under the leadership of our Chancellor, it's a different college. It's starting a new college with our emphasis, really with our emphasis in achieving the dream and our emphasis not just on access but student success, it really is like starting a new college. And it's a lot of work, and it's challenging, but it is what? Fun. And I particularly want to thank Dr. Darlage, David Wells, and the Chancellor for giving me the opportunity to be in the leadership role to help not just the students to achieve the dream, for us as sort of a new college to achieve our dream. Thank you.
Well, Gary, welcome, and your new Well, Gary, welcome in your new role, and it's always a little humbling for me to have to listen to somebody who's been here longer than I have. So, thank you. Dr. Gates Black has the new person. Joy?
Chancellor, Mr. Greenhill, Board Trustees, I am pleased to introduce Sheri Mata as the new director for Achieving the Dream. Now Sheri is no stranger to TCC, having completed her associate's degree at the Northeast Campus. After graduating from TCC, Sheri continued her studies at Texas Wesleyan University, where she obtained both a bachelor's and a master's degree. Sheri's background and experience includes 10 years as a secondary instructor and headmaster at Academia Christian Academy. In that capacity, she developed bridge programs and instituted a dual-credit program. After receiving her master's degree, Sheri began working at Texas Wesleyan, where she held positions as a transfer liaison, career advisor, and director of career services. Her extensive experience includes working with students, faculty, staff, and administrators at all levels of the institution to effectively develop and implement early alert programs, academic and career advising, tutoring labs, and success centers. In addition to her work as an administrator, Sheri has taught for TCC at the Southeast Campus in the Continuing Education Division, and for the past four years, she has taught psychology at our Northeast Campus. Please join me in welcoming Sheri to her new role.
Chancellor and members of the board, and especially Ms. Appleman, I'm so excited to be here as part of Achieving the Dream. I would like to especially thank Dr. Gates Black, Dr. Wells, and Ms. Alma Martinez-Egger for selecting me and having that confidence that I'm the one for this position. When I read the job description, I thought, "This is exactly what I want to do," and TCC is exactly where I've wanted to be for some time now, and I'm very excited to be a part of Achieving the Dream. And I'd especially like to thank Alma for her extensive training and all the time she's spent with me covering the materials. I was so excited to get here that I officially started January 2nd, but I unofficially started November 30th for the two-day meeting at Trinity River, which was very informational for me, very informational. And I'm excited to be a part of this team. I'm just very excited. I want to dedicate the rest of my life and my career doing what TCC has been doing, the commitment to student success. And I plan to continue on being here as long as possible to help those same students find success in the classroom and outside the classroom. And just thank you very much. I'm very excited to be a part of the team.
Welcome Sheri. We're so pleased to have you here. And finally, for our last introduction, Mr. Joe Bosley. While Joe is coming to the podium, I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank him for the wonderful service that he has given to this college, serving as the interim director for institutional...
Information and technology.
Information and technology, taking over the position at Maria Shelton, and he stepped right in. He's done an absolutely fantastic job of working with us, and we are very, very appreciative. And I suppose this may be your last official duty...
Yes, Chancellor.
...to this board, because the new person will be here on Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Bosley, thank you so much for your help. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And now for your person.
It's my privilege today to introduce Dr. Terri Day. She is the new executive director of Institutional Research and Planning. She earned an AAS in Social Sciences from Herkimer County Community College, a BA in Sociology from the State University of New York, Institute of Technology at Utica-Rome, an MA in Counseling and Personnel Services from the University of Maryland at College Park, and a PhD in Educational Leadership with a concentration in Higher Education Administration from the University of Dayton. She is a member of the Association for Institutional Research and the Texas Association for Institutional Research. Terri is a past editorial board member for the Journal of Educational Research in Education and a current reviewer for the Midwestern Educational Researcher. Terri has worked in higher education settings for the past 12 years in areas such as tech prep, student success, and institutional research. We know personally that Terri is very much missed at the University of Texas at Arlington. We welcome you, Dr. Terri Day.
Chancellor Hadley, President Greenhill, and board members, it's my pleasure to serve TCC, and I do see it as a service. I am a community college graduate. I was with the National Colleges Possible Initiative, so I'm very excited to be here. And if I could adapt an old Texas saying, that it took me a while, but I did make it to TCC. And I did not leave a husband behind. I found a husband in Texas. So, I'm very excited to be here and to launch the new institutional research office. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day, and she started work just a few days ago. You know, we have this kind of a joke now. Anybody who comes to work here, and we give them an official start date, and it never works out that way. They always come before their official start date, because we have so much work to do. We have so many exciting things going on, and we say, "Come on, can you get them here? Can you get just a few days earlier so they won't miss out on this or that?" Including the presidents. They all got here a little bit early, so we're very appreciative. Dr. Day, by the way, I was able to call and beg for a slot. We must go to Atlanta the end of this month for a Southern Association of Colleges and Schools work session. It is a mandatory, they don't ask if you want to come. They tell you that you must be there, and they specify that I must be there, that Mark McLendon must be there, and that David must be there. The three of us are mandated to be there. And then we can bring two other people that we want to take with us, and of course, the sex liaison person has to be there, so that's four. And because of the things that we're doing and the fact that Doctors Wells and Black are connected at the hips when it comes to student success, then she has to go with us. And so, you know, we needed Dr. Day to go, because she's our new researcher, and researcher's at the very heart of everything we're going to be doing with the Southern Association Reaffirmation Visit. And so, I called on yesterday, I guess, and begged Bell Wheeler. I said, "Dr. Bell, please, you know, can we just bring one more person, because we really need..." She's brand-new. We need her to learn everything she needs to know about us. You know, we're so large and we're so complex. Please let us find a spot. So, she put me on the phone, on hold, and she came back and she said, "Let me call this," whatever her assistant was, who was working on that, and she called back, and she said, "I said, 'I just have one more person.'" She said, "Now, I remember the person laughed in my face, you know. Where am I going to put her?" I said, "Well, you'll find a place." So, Dr. Terri, we're so glad that we found a spot for you to join our team, and so we're really looking forward to that. And I'm not going to go over my campus accolades tonight. You can read all of those, but that's your good bedtime reading. And it's very, very exciting, so I caution you, don't start reading it until you have time, because you won't go to sleep on it. You'll read all those wonderful things that our faculty and staff members are doing on a regular basis. And thanks to the presidents and to Dr. Wells for giving us all that good information about your faculty and staff. But I'm going to use the next few minutes to call on a member of our JCC. Jill Thrash is going to come for just a minute. She's on our Southeast Campus, representing the faculty, and she's going to talk to you just a minute about the faculty experiences both at Academics Day and the other Professional Development Day that I kind of urged them to do with Dr. Kay McLennan. So, Ms. Thrash?
Thank you very much, Chancellor Hadley, President Greenhill, board members. Thank you for letting me be here. And I guess one of the first things that I want to say is, we had a fantastic speaker on our very first day back on the 9th. It was Dr. Ken Bain. And Dr. Ken Bain has written a book, which I just happen to have had with me. This book is called What the Best College Teachers Do. And all of our faculty members pre-registered for attending our workshop, and we either spent the morning with Dr. Bain, or we spent the afternoon with Dr. Bain. For pre-registering, every one of our faculty members received one of his books. And what's so interesting is he has done such a beautiful job of saying, "The best teachers get the attention of their audience." We did that also with our presidential interviews. I'm going to try and get your attention the way that poor Dr. Jordan and poor Dr. Kapala had to be interviewed at our campus. If you were a cartoon character, who would you be and why? Does that make you think for a second? Does it make you think outside the box? It makes you take your brain power. There is no right answer. You have to substantiate that answer with a why and give reason for it, and you can see our two brand-new presidents going, "Oh, I remember that." But that's exactly what Dr. Bain was saying. We have to find a way to engage our students. And our faculty left there going, "Wow, this is so wonderful. We've got to be outside the box. We've got to be away from, let's just make them regurgitate information. Let's make them think. Let's make them think." They've been used to, at the public school level, taking their tax tests and having to give an exact answer for things, and that's not what we need to do with our students coming up. I do want to recognize in front of the board, our JCC chair is Ann Drake. Ann happens to be home with 101 temperature tonight. She would have been here. Leading us on Academics Day, as I said, we were either with Dr. Bain for two hours in the morning or two hours in the afternoon. If we weren't with Dr. Bain, we were attending other best practices sessions with faculty members who had agreed to take their time over the holiday to prepare their dynamite presentations. And each of the campuses had 10 faculty members who volunteered to come and do those presentations. And organizing all of that were all of the presidents and the president-elect's of the JCC. But our host campus was the Trinity River Campus, and Dr. Fulkerson, thank you so much. But I want to recognize also your chairman, or your president of your faculty senate, Jamie Miller. Jamie is teaching a class tonight, so she could not be here, but we do have her president-elect, Robin Burke, right back here. And my president-elect, Joe Tucker, was one of our speakers on Academics Day. So, we have very involved faculty. Academics Day just couldn't have gone any better, and it also gave a chance to highlight the Trinity River Campus and for everybody to say, "Wow, it's so big." And one of the sad things that happened, and actually, it's kind of funny at the same time, one of our speakers, happened to have been a speaker from my campus, was giving his presentation in 4201. And he went in, and there were four faculty members there from my same campus in 4201. However, Dr. Fulkerson was all around the campus looking for this speaker, because my speaker was in 4201 TRTR, and he was supposed to be in 4201 TREF. He was giving a presentation on being accurate, being prepared, and making sure you're in the right place. So, bless his heart. He was prepared. He was ready to go. He was all set up and thought he was in the right place. That day was a success. That was the start of our Professional Development Week, which was Monday. We ended our Professional Development Week at the Hurst Center, which is just south of the Northeast Campus. And the entire campuses, entire faculties gathered together to listen to Kay McLennan. And you heard Dr. Gates Black speak earlier about the presence that she had. And one of the things that rang true to most of the faculty was, "Students don't do optional." And it's true. And you know what? Neither do faculty. We don't do optional. We do well with mandates. When we know this is required, we do it. By golly, and we do it well. But our students are the same way. And so, that mandatory attendance, and it's truly not a mandatory attendance, it's an attendance policy, and it's telling them how many days we need you there. And Kay did such a good job of showing us all of the data and relating that to us, but as I said, it holds true. We don't do optional. So, thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for representing the faculty so extremely well.
I have one, something on our agenda that I was going to talk about the Academics Day, and I know Ms. Appleman and I, we were both there in the noon talk, Dr. Bain's talk, and we were on opposite sides of the room. But I saw, the faculty was having fun. It was a fun thing, and Dr. Bain's remarks are phenomenal. I mean, they were phenomenal. And I have the book too, and so does Ms. Appleman, and I intend...
We made sure you got them.
Well, yeah, I saw you there. But it was, thank you. It was a lot of fun, and he was absolutely intriguing.
Board members, these are the kinds of activities that are so necessary and that I am so very pleased to support, which was one of the main reasons why in our budget, we found a way to increase the faculty and professional development budget. It's a half million dollars this year. And while that may sound like a lot of money with the number of faculty members we have, and especially including the adjuncts, and by the way, there were large numbers of adjunct faculty in attendance on both days, because we have made a point to invite them to all of these activities and to make sure that they feel welcome, and they are accepting it with a great spirit. And you can tell that many of them are very, very eager to be a part of it. One of them actually called me out on Friday. She wasn't talking to me personally, but she said, "This is the first time we've ever done so and so and so and so." And I said, "Well, just hold on. You know, we're going to do more of this." So, we're very pleased to have this kind of great professional development opportunities for our faculty, and thank you, JCC members, for the leadership that you give to the faculty, and thank you, board members, for making it all available. That's it for me.
Okay. Well, speaking about the budget, I'm sorry to bring up such a perhaps boring subject, but I did put this on the agenda to float an idea for the board. We can have a brief discussion about it. In talking with the governance committee and with some other trustees, there's been expressed an interest in having a more detailed review of our budget process. And I'm just, and wanted to, for no action, perhaps next meeting or a meeting after that, to propose, it could be a budget committee, a meeting as a whole, to go into more detail, particularly for the newbies on our budget process. I came up with some words that a committee, or we could put it with the finance committee to review board priorities, budget assumptions, the allocation model, and annual budget calendar to make recommendations to the board with respect thereto. Now, some of the discussion has given the chancellor some heartburn about how far we go into affairs that are traditionally a part of her or the office's prerogatives. My view is not to do that, but to do something very broad. And so, I'm just putting it out, if we want to have, I know it's late. This is the last thing on the agenda, but I wanted to float it out there and see what the board thinks about that. I know there is some resistance to committees. I know there is some resistance to committees. I don't like to have committees just to have committees, but this might be something that we could incorporate into a Budget Committee or on its own, or the Audit and Finance Committee. So, I'm asking for some input on this from the Board Members. I don't want to surprise anybody, but this is something that's been discussed back and forth when we meet each other from time to time. Of course, not in a quorum session, but any input. It's 10 till 9. A lot of people want to go home.
I do have some info. I think we need to go, we need to move forward with that and go into discussions about the possibility of doing that.
Okay.
I would like more information, but yes, it's something that I would be interested in.
I think it's a good idea as well. I wondered about creating a separate Budget Committee when we have a Finance Committee already, that we could simply fold that function into. Nor do I have a problem with doing it as a committee of a whole, all this kind of clumsy to sit here in that kind of session. It might be better to have some recommendations given to the General Board, and then they could work from that.
Dr. Morrison, I know you have a view, and I like your wisdom.
Thank you. I'm always in favor of committees of the whole, because I think, you know, that puts all of us on the same page. We all get the same information. We can digest it and then ask the same questions and hear the answers to the same questions. So, if we're going to review the budget process, I think we, it would be a good idea to designate a time where we would all go through that process together. It doesn't have to be necessarily a lengthy process, but it would be very good updating and orientation for all of us.
Okay.
And I'd be willing to so dedicate some of my precious time.
Ms. Appleman, I don't want you off the spot. You're the Chair of the Audit Committee.
Well, on behalf of my two members, we'd be happy to start the process and then perhaps bring it to the Board in a workshop session, so that we're not in this format, but sitting around a table, talking about the items. So, however you want to do it, we're...
Well, I'm just trying to...
I would also support this effort. I think we ought to have more expertise in the budgetary area, and either a separate committee or within the Audit Committee would, I think, would be a good idea, so that we could spend the time necessary to go through the budget and all those different aspects of preparing the budget and then presenting it to the whole Board.
I'd like... Am I on? No? Yeah, I'm on. I would just like to say, I am an advocate of, meaning as a committee of the whole, but if it furthers the process for the Audit Committee to, you know, vet the issues or facilitate some questions for us to all get together, I just think that would be most helpful. Just to clarify, is the intent to review how we're doing the budget? Or how...
The process, for example, okay, Carter came up with some, the idea of budget parameters, and that's what gave the Chancellor some heartburn, I think. Did you see, I saw them, some, he floated an idea of some budget parameters, and one of them, several of them, gave the Chancellor some heartburn.
Mr. Greenhill, please let me interrupt for just a second.
No.
Because there was only one.
I know there's one. Okay, one of them.
Not several. As a matter of fact, I have to say for the record...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
That's okay. But I just indicated that there were 11 parameters that Mr. Carter outlined. Of the 11, three of them were specifically related to the Board. And my comments were that absolutely, you know, those within the Board's purview, whatever they want to do with. Eight of the 11 were parameters that actually, almost identical to the ones that we used last year as we built the budget, because our CFO had brought budget parameters, as good CFOs do, to tell us, you know, and we all talked about those and adopted those, you know. Whatever we did, we were going to be looking at students first, and lots of different things like that. And there was only one of the 11 that I took issue with, and we'll talk about that at another time.
Of course.
But, you know, what you want to do with the budget is absolutely fine by me. It was just the one item that I had a problem with, something that I thought was within my purview to do, that perhaps was on that list for the Board to do. So, I just think that's something that we need to hash out. That's all.
What I have in mind is development of the process, not, is, like parameters, what does the Board have? Is there priorities? And I don't want to micromanage, but more information on, what do we think our priorities Budget assumptions, that would be the prior, the things that, okay, we're talking about. No, I'm talking in general terms, not a...
Yeah, I think too, the budget is basically the expression of policy. I mean, that's how it's manifested in how you invest your dollars. And I mean, some of these were exactly, as the Chancellor says, exactly, in keeping what we're doing already, with, you know, that we want to, you know, if we have to make budget reductions, that we do so, it's the least impact on classrooms, for example, on classroom instruction, that we look at the accountability, not accountability, but the achievements of students should be one of our top priorities. Those are sort of general things. Setting budget parameters is not uncommon practice in literally any elected government entity, and they're generally very, very broad. And, you know, one of these, again, you know what you like when you see it. One of these, you know, that I recommended, for example, was that we set aside specific dollar amount for pay-as-you-go future new capital projects, so that when we show up, for example, if we decide to do an aviation training center, that the money would be there, because right now, that is such a large expenditure, that we simply wouldn't be able to do it with pay-as-you-go if we didn't put aside some funds. That's the kind of sort of things that I was looking at.
Well, the more you talk, the more I see this sounding like a process, and the more I believe that all of us need to be present as we work through the process. Otherwise, when you all do all that talking, and you bring it to me, I'm going to have so many questions that all of your work is going to be for naught. So, I think that as you plan it, you need to, I would suggest that we plan it, so that we can all be involved in the dialogue, whatever the dialogue is, and however it is structured at the same time.
Any other observations? Okay. Thank you, everybody. And now, we're going to go into closed meeting, and I'm going to announce right now that we do not anticipate any action, so that y'all can put up your stuff and go home. So, this is my statement here, deliberation of Section 551.072, Texas Government Code. The real property discussion will address the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. Secondly, deliberation of personnel matters, Section 551.074, Texas Government Code. The deliberation will include the discussion of the performance and evaluation of the Chancellor. And thirdly, consultation with the Attorney, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code, for the purpose of private consultation with the Board Attorney on any subjects, matters authorized by law. Thank you very much. We will now go into executive session.